Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board appeals meeting of Tuesday, June 25th, 2013. I will call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of our May 28th meeting. Any comments around the minutes? Barry, any comments on the minutes from last week, or last month, rather?
Yeah, definitely.
You're good to go. Okay. You got a motion for the approval of the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes of the May 28th, 2013, meeting as drafted.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay. First item. It's all new business. This is to hear the request of Heather Dallas of One Indian Rock Woods, Scarborough, Maine, for administrative appeal of a letter written by the CEO concerning map 7 lot I know we've gotten a lot of correspondence on this particular application. What I'd like to do is we will hear the appeal motion of the applicant. The board will ask whatever questions they may have of the applicant. We'll then listen to the, any public, we'll put the public comment of the other, within the context of the other letters that we've seen as well. And the board will ask questions of those. So, we're going to try and avoid the freewheeling discussion that sometimes we get into in some of our meetings. So, before we get into the presentation, Ben, would you like to just give us some background on this appeal?
Sure. This is a 4,000 square foot lot at 502 Delano Park. There's been a garage, it's a non-conforming lot, obviously. There's a non-conforming structure, there's a garage has been on the lot for 40, 50, 60 years, maybe, since before we kept records. In the mid-'90s, the then-owner of the property began a process to use the garage as a dwelling unit. The May 17th, 1994 assessment record characterizes the upstairs as garage quarters, or characterized the structure as garage quarters, not usable, no disposal system, no plumbing, and not used. Those are notes from the assessor, May 17th, 1994. Since then, the only permit or approval that the town has issued is for the septic system. There was never a certificate of occupancy, no internal plumbing permits, no electrical permits, no building permits. And that's the situation. So, it's a very murky file to determine the legal use on the property. There's also correspondence between the former CEO, Bruce Smith. Also, there's correspondence with the CEO prior, Ernie McVane, between the owners of the property. And I was asked to sort this out and write a document that I believe amounts to the legal use of the property, and that's the letter that is being appealed.
Have any photographs?
Yeah. I wanted to ask, Ben, if you could describe the current condition of the property. Is it still just kind of an apartment with a, you know, a garage with a toilet in it that goes to the septic, or is it an actual residence now?
I don't know.
And there was...
You don't know that there's a question?
Let's hold off on that until...
No, I, I don't know. I do not know the interior condition. I don't know if plumbing was in there. I don't know how plumbing would have gotten in there without any plumbing permits being issued.
Okay. That was going to be my question. So, the town doesn't have any record of any permits being issued for the installation of any plumbing whatsoever?
Correct.
Okay. So, as far as the town is concerned, absent Mr. Smith's, the correspondence, from the town's perspective, it remains what it says on the assessor records from 1997?
The assessment record did change in 2011 that indicated it was used as living space, but the assessor did not inspect it. The current assessor, who's been here for 15 or so years, has also never stepped foot in there and doesn't know what's in there. He has a significant level of depreciation on it, but he said he based his 2011 assessment of living space on the code enforcement officers, on knowledge from the code enforcement officer that it was now a dwelling unit.
Okay. And we don't have a copy of your letter in this particular application, right? Or do we, and I've just blown through it?
I think it was in that blue packet that we got. Before the last meeting, it got the blue packet.
Right. Okay. Yes. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Yes.
I'm Tom Jewell. Sounds quite loud here. Attorney for the applicants. My partner, Paul Bulger, wrote the brief. I work with the firm of Jewell and Bulger from Portland. If I may, I have some recent pictures of the property, if I can pass those out.
Sure.
I asked Mr. Bulger, since he had written the brief, he was sort of the attorney, was getting correspondence. I had asked him if he had ever seen a brief from Attorney Bischoff, which we had expected because we knew he had entered his appearance and requested a continuance from the hearing that was scheduled before, and we never received that. I didn't know he had filed a brief until this evening, when Ben indicated that he had received one. So, I haven't really had a chance to read that or prepare any rebuttal. If there's anything kind of new and unusual in that brief that would prejudice, I would like the opportunity to come back at a subsequent hearing, once we've had an opportunity, to prepare a proper response to that. But perhaps we won't need to do that.
I'll see how it goes.
That's my hope. So, I'm here with my clients, the owners, Heather Dallas and her husband, Howard Levy. They've owned the property since 2004. Bruce Smith is also here. They had asked him if he could appear in case there were some questions that he might be able to assist with regarding the history of the property. I know from the many hours my clients have spent dealing with this property and its history, they've never been able to find anything prior to 1996 that shows anything of the property, even though, as Ben said, it's probably been there 40 or more years prior to that. So, I mean, they suspect that there are some missing documents, perhaps an older file that had gotten lost that dealt with some of these issues, but, you know, at this juncture, there's no history in this property that they've been able to find prior to 1996. This property and Lot 44 were owned together for many years, until the last month or two, when Lot 44 was sold separately. I, you'll have to excuse me if I mispronounce Delano. I work with the loan officer, Delano, whose name is exactly the same, and that's, I kept calling this Delano until somebody corrected me. When they bought these properties at Delano Park, the small lot had a septic tank on it, and there was a pipe in the road that connected it to the main property, Lot 44, where the leach field was that served both of these properties. Now, it was apparently installed by Lisa Newbold in the mid or late '90s, and at that time, Ernie McVane had issued the permit, and he had found that Lot 46 at that time was a grandfathered residential use and allowed the installation of the septic system. But at that time, discussed with Lisa, that because the, there was a pipe joining the two properties that shared a common leach field, that they would have to stay in common ownership. Now, later, that, when my clients bought the property, their attorney pointed out that the pipe that had been put in the private road at Delano Park, that there was no easement for that. So, they approached the Delano Park Association to request a formal easement, and I think Mr. McLaughlin just gave you a letter from the association essentially denying that request in 2006. So, my clients decided to look at other options. And they had found that the science of septic disposal had advanced enough that it was possible to put a separate leach field on Lot 46 just to serve that property. So, they began an effort in the mid-2000s to do that. Bruce Smith was involved. Bruce, at the time, had issued his letter that we had submitted in 2005 indicating that this was a grandfathered, single-family dwelling, and he later issued septic permits to allow the separate leach field to serve Lot 46A as a separate, single-family dwelling. So, besides the written findings of Mr. Smith over those years, my clients, particularly Heather, had many meetings with Mr. Smith. Each one of them, he confirmed that this was a grandfathered, single-family dwelling that could be sold separately. And based on that, they installed the leach field for Lot 46A and eventually sold the main house, which happened recently. So, the septic system was certainly a decision in and of itself of the code enforcement office, and similar to a building permit. And those permits that were issued, again, in the late, around 2007, have never been appealed, and the work has been done to install those leach fields. No further issues arose until this year, when my clients began an effort to sell the main house separately and looked at an option to improve the existing dwelling, which is admittedly pretty ugly. So, we've submitted pictures of the present building, and attached to that are some sketches that their architect has prepared to show a possible replacement for the existing structure. That would involve tearing down the existing structure and putting up this new building. The architect, as well, had many meetings with Mr. Smith to discuss what could occur on the property, and again, in those meetings, Mr. Smith reiterated that this was a single-family dwelling and could be torn down and replaced with a new structure. That brought some angst to the neighbors, who brought their concerns to Mr. McDougal. And then, based on that, he issued his letter of March 29th, 2013, which is the subject of this evening's appeal. Now, I'd like to emphasize that Mr. McDougal first finds that there is a grandfathered, single-family dwelling unit at this property. However, then he goes on to opine that it is an accessory dwelling unit, which is a non-conforming use in the RA zone. Now, Mr. McDougal's letter makes it clear that his conclusion was based upon representations that the prior owners had apparently made to Ernie McVane, that the main lot and the small lot would stay together, and that's where he came up, apparently, with a conclusion that the small lot was an accessory dwelling unit, because he does allude to the earlier correspondence between Mr. McVane and Mrs. Newbold, that the two lots would stay in common ownership, which, again, was revised once the new leach field went in, and Mr. Smith looked at it and found there was no need to keep them connected because they each were separate, independent living quarters at that time. That agreement between Mrs. Newbold and Ernie McVane was never reduced to any kind of formal easement or covenant that was recorded with the property, so there's nothing other than a discussion between those two that suggests that there was any agreement, and certainly a discussion of that sort is not binding on subsequent property owners. Now, looking, so we're really here just to, for the very limited purpose of appealing Mr. McDougal's finding that this is an accessory dwelling unit, as opposed to simply a single-family dwelling unit, as had been found by earlier code enforcement officers. If the board would simply, well, turn to the definition of accessory dwelling unit under Section 19-1-3, which we have set forth in our submission, it's quite short, so I'll read it in full. "Accessory dwelling unit: A single subordinate dwelling unit accessory to and wholly contained within a principal building or structure and/or attached garage in which a single-family dwelling unit is the principal use." So, there's no conceivable way that Lot 46A could be defined as an accessory dwelling unit. It's not attached to the main building, never has been, it's always been a separate lot. There's other lots, at least one of the lot, with separate ownership between the two. There's never been a merger, and, again, I would respectfully submit, Mr. McDougal, that describing it as an accessory dwelling unit is not a proper interpretation of the ordinance. And again, so as I mentioned, Mr. McDougal had found, as a premise for his opinion, that there was a grandfather dwelling on the property. That issue has never been appealed. The abiders have not filed any appeal arguing that that is incorrect. So, at this juncture, the CBA, of course, being a board of limited jurisdiction, can only review appeals that are presented to it. At this juncture, the only appeal pending is the appeal that the applicants have filed, and on that appeal, our only issue is with the addition of the word accessory to the dwelling unit that Mr. McDougal put in his letter. So, I would suggest that efforts to go back to the earlier history of the property, which the board has already started to discuss, is not appropriate. There's nothing before the board this evening that opens the door for a discussion of that. We're only here to review our appeal, and that's on the very narrow issue of whether this an accessory dwelling unit or a single-family dwelling unit. The abiders had a problem with this being a dwelling unit, they could have filed their own appeal. It's been two and a half months, they've never done that. So, if it, of course, as Mr. McDougal properly points out, an accessory dwelling unit is not a conforming use under the ordinance. On the other hand, a single-family dwelling unit is a conforming use in the RA zone under Section 19-6-1B2A. So, it is a, the property here is a conforming use on a non-conforming lot. So, if the board agrees with my contention that the only issue here is the very limited one for discussion, then the issues that we submitted in our brief, Items 1 and 3, would never be reached, although I would like to reserve the right to go back to those if my contention doesn't hold up with the board. So, in conclusion, keeping it short and sweet, because, again, we're only here on that one little issue, we submit that Lot 46A has been determined multiple times by three code enforcement officers to have a grandfather dwelling unit. It clearly isn't an accessory dwelling unit, so it must be just simply a single-family dwelling unit. That's the only issue for the board to consider tonight, is that status and our appeal, limited appeal, Mr. McDougal's letter to that effect. And that is it for my presentation at this juncture. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should mention that both Heather, and in particular, Aaron Howard, have spent many hours analyzing all this. They probably know the ordinance better than I do, and they're likely to jump in at any time. Is there anything that you folks would like to add at this juncture, or anything I've misstated?
If you do, we'd like you to go to the microphone.
Given that, if we're only going to address that specific issue, then this may not be relevant, but just to answer the question or to correct a couple facts about the living unit, or when it had living unit? And Tom, you want to look at this with me, or no? I have a copy of a card that has a 1993 date on it and a 2002 date on it that shows that, calls it a seasonal dwelling, single-family seasonal. It has an upstairs with a wood floor, some softwood, some hardwood, drywall, electric. So, just for the sake of answering your earlier questions or whatever, so, I don't know if you want to see this or not, but anyway, I have it.
So, just to that point, you live there, obviously. That's where...
No, I don't live there.
You don't live there?
No.
Is it in, is it currently in a condition such that people live...
Yeah. It's been, it's been lived in since before we bought the property. There's been tenants in there.
If you have a 1992 card or anything else of that sort that you want in the record, you need to give us copies of it in order for it to come into the record.
Okay.
So, if you want it in.
I'm not, if we stick on point, then it's not relevant, but since you were inquiring, I thought I'd answer it. Thank you.
I have one initial question. So, you mentioned that you had not yet seen the brief from Mr. Bischoff, but just to touch on one point that he raises, and I think it's easy to dispose with, but we have to touch on it anyways because it's a jurisdictional issue. He raises the argument that the appeal is not timely by virtue of the fact that you filed 31 days after, by virtue of the fact that it fell, the 30 days fell on a Sunday?
That's correct. The 30 days fell on a weekend, so we did file it on the next business day, which I have to admit is, certainly applies to rules of court. I don't know specifically about, if Cape Elizabeth has a different rule in that regard. I do note that there was no authority mentioned in the brief that suggested that that was fatal to an appeal. And if, again, that's an example, that if that does become a problem, then we would certainly like an opportunity to brief that point. So, I know when talking with Ben earlier, that he, in fact, we had talked with him prior to that Friday, when we were late in getting our brief together, and I think he said it would be okay to file it on Monday, not that that in and of itself would change any applicable deadline, so.
So, it may come up when the other side has an opportunity to present their arguments as to whether that extension applies, and I completely understand that normally, if something falls on a Sunday, you get till the next day, much like tax holiday, the tax days, and everything else will move if they fall on Patriots' Day, so on and so forth.
Just a correction. I do, I also believe that if something falls on a holiday or a weekend, you get the next business day, but I did not say on Friday that you have till Monday.
Okay.
I never said that.
That was Paul talking with you. I wasn't directly involved with that conversation. I know we had some conversations about trying to get it in that Friday, and that didn't happen, so.
Correct.
Are you familiar with what the minimum lot size is in the RA district?
Yes. Way less than what we have here.
Way less?
Way, oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Yes. I know it's, we have a small lot in the zone.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we certainly have a non-conforming lot.
Hmm. Okay.
When was Lot 46 sold? The larger...
Lot 44?
Sorry.
Couple months ago. One month ago.
April 15th.
So, after the CEO had already issued his letter?
Correct. But I would, if I may, add one thing. I mean, it was under contract prior to that letter coming out, and again, at the time it was put under contract, there'd been many conversations with Mr. Smith over the years that this was a separate lot and could be sold separately. So, when it went under contract, Mr. McDougal had not yet written his letter, and my clients were subject to a binding contract that they would have had to breach if...
And I understand the argument that your clients may not, are arguing that they were, may have been unaware at the time of purchase of any agreement that may have existed between the prior owner and the CEO regarding the inability to split the lots if the septic system was approved. Were they aware of it at the time of the sale in April?
Yes, but again, in the intervening years...
I understand. I understand. I just...
A lot had happened.
Get all the facts out. They believed that later on, it was indicated that there was approval to split the lots. Nevertheless, they were aware of the prior agreement at the time of sale.
Right. Their attorney, I believe, gave them an opinion that because that had never been reduced to a formal easement or covenant, that it was not binding.
Under that argument, we often will grant variances or conditional use permits for businesses. Are you telling us that if we don't require the individuals to register that with the registry of deeds, that the restrictions we place on them are not enforceable?
Well, I guess no less than subsequent conversations with Mr. Smith that suggested it wasn't a covenant that was necessary, and it could be sold separately. So, I, you know, if Mr. McVane's opinion was binding, then I suppose Mr. Smith's subsequent change of opinion would be binding as well.
I guess I'm curious to hear more about what conversations you're saying to Mr. Smith and their clients, because it seems like from what I've read, Mr. Smith's book to the prior owners, your clients bought the property in August of 2004.
Correct.
I know your clients, from what I've seen in the record, or at least what's been submitted, they were speaking to the association, but I'm not sure I've seen anything talking about them talking to former code enforcement officers. I mean, I'm just, I'd like to know when they spoke to him and what...
Well, they actually were able to obtain his calendar that shows, I think, at least eight formal meetings that you had with Mr. Smith over the years. I don't know, maybe Mr. Smith would like to speak to that, if you want to inquire on that point. Corey, we could submit the Mr. Smith's calendar into evidence if you would like to pursue that issue.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm at, I mean, you're telling me that they've spoken to Mr. Smith. I'm telling you, I haven't seen anything, heard anything about it. I just want to know what they're talking about.
Well, they, yeah, I mean, well, again, other than Mr. Smith's letter, 2005, and various septic systems, there was really nothing in writing between them regarding those conversations. So, again, he did issue those written opinions and decisions indicating that he considered this a single-family lot, and those were borne out by many meetings where he said the same thing verbally. That wasn't reduced to writing. I'm not sure I'm getting quite to your point.
You mean, you say you've made a sale?
I'm sorry?
You've made a sale of this particular piece of property?
The main lot, Lot 44, was sold on April 15th.
The lot that we're talking about tonight?
That's still owned by the applicants, Lot 46A.
Help me out on that again. What we're talking about tonight, has that been sold?
No.
Oh, okay. The other one, okay.
Right.
Is there currently a septic system on 46A?
Yes, and leach field.
Okay. So, there, the pipe that runs across the road no longer is used by this lot?
Correct. When the association refused to grant a formal easement, the clients looked at other options and decided that they could actually install a system on 46A to serve that property.
And it was installed, and it's there, and it's for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
I think it's two.
The permit, is the permit in the back of there? It's for a single-family dwelling, one to two-bedroom, it would be what the permit is.
Now, do I need to repeat that for the record?
One to two family, single-family dwelling, one to two bedrooms. Septic is installed on the property.
And just so we're clear, Exhibit G, which is the letter from CEO Smith dated November 25th, 2005, indicates that seven, eight days after he started as the CEO for the town, quote, "I approved the septic system application on 9/23/97, but with a restriction that the two properties remain in the same ownership." So, as of 2005... 2005, his position was still that it was approved with the restriction that the properties remain in the same ownership.
Right. Again, up to that point, they shared a common leach field. So, it wasn't until the proposal came forward to install a new leach field on Lot 46A, that the conversation turned to the fact that this was a separate, single-family dwelling.
Was it Exhibit G, Chris?
Exhibit G, yes. So, but, I understand the argument that it's a separate, single-family dwelling, was, but was the explicit statement ever made by the CEO that, and therefore, that prior restriction I placed in permitting the septic system no longer applies?
Again, not, I don't believe in writing that was done, but I-
Was it said verbally?
Yes, many times. Again, Mr. Smith met with the architect, they knew the plans for the property. That was the whole idea of installing a separate leach field, was to, is, to prepare the property for potential separate sale. So, that was the, the plan from when you first started. Well, do you want to come up? Why don't you come up here? Right, yes. No, well, correct the way.
When we purchased the properties, we did not purchase them with the intention to separate the properties. That's one thing I want to make clear, because that was mentioned in both briefs and everything. We didn't purchase them that way. It was only after we were told by our attorney, "By the way, you know, there's no formal easement, okay? All right, you should get an easement, because you don't have the legal right to have that sewer pipe go, go under the common land." So, we went to the association, asked them if we could get a legal easement, and they said no. They said no, you have the letter there. They said no, because the original bylaws, they felt, didn't give them the right to give one owner rights over the common land that another didn't have. But as it turns out, they didn't have the right to grant an easement, period, because it turned out that the homeowners' association had never been incorporated, all right? So, that, brought that up. They did incorporate several months later, I forget how much later, but anyway, they told us, they would not give us an easement. I explained to them that Lisa Newbold had told me that she was given permission by the association to run that pipe. She said it was when Ralph Pride was the president of the association. Ralph Pride still resides in Delano Park, but I believe he didn't remember. Apparently, the, the records from the Delano Park Association for 1997 have been misplaced. And that probably is when he would have given her that. I spoke to Lisa myself, a couple of days ago, and she said she thought he had even written something that said, "You have the park's permission, it would be a temporary position, that they could remove."
But it wasn't a recorded easement in the registry?
But there was no recorded easement. So, then, when we asked for the recorded easement, they said we couldn't get a recorded easement. So, I went to Bruce, met with Bruce Smith, and said, "What are my options here? Because I can't, I can't make that sewer pipe legal. So, when I go to sell this property, you know, shame on me for not getting it done when I bought it, but in order for me to transfer a title, I need, I should have an easement there." So, he said, "Well," and, and at this point in time, I also discovered that there had been, there was no restriction recorded in the deed. Lisa had said she would do it, but she just didn't do it. It was just an oversight on her part, as she's told me. So, Bruce said, Bruce and I discussed it, my attorney discussed it, and they said, "If there's, was never any deed restriction done, and now you've been denied the right to, you know, to have legal access over there, that would carry to a, on a permanent basis, what are the other options?" And Mr. Smith said, "Well, you know, you've already got the septic tank and the pump on the little lot. Nowadays, they have these very small systems. It's a one-to-two bedroom, 26-row, I forget what it is, but it's in your pocket. It requires state approval, but he said, "That's something that could be done on the lot." And then, you'd, it would be on its own, for several reasons, none of which were our doing. In other words, we just sort of reacted to the things that happened. Albert Frick was hired by us to come out and do the design. Albert Frick discussed it with Bruce Smith. The design says, "Single-family dwelling" on it. It does not say in-law, like the first, the old one did."
But did, did Bruce say that the restriction no longer applied?
Yes, because there was another way to get it on the lot. Yes, he did. The reason it applied was just because he didn't want to leave the lot-
So, what I'm trying to get at was, was there a prior restriction that potentially is applicable to you, that the restriction was then waived by the town official later on? In, you're saying-
I would say, yes, it wasn't needed.
They're saying verbally, yes, he did waive it.
Yes, he said, you, go ahead.
So, I'd like to move to some of the other accessory structure issues, if I may. So, your argument is that it can't be an accessory building, because it's not the same lot as the principal building, as what has been called the principal building, the other house, correct? So, it can't, and the other counterargument is that it can't be a dwelling unit, because it lacked plumbing. Is it, correct? Would you agree with that? At least, that's the argument that's being raised. So, my question that I'm going to try to get at here is, what is it?
Again, I would not agree with your second assertion, that it's not a dwelling unit. I mean, it's been found to be a dwelling unit, and again, Mr. McDougal's letter said it's a grandfathered apartment.
We can agree, it doesn't meet the actual letter of what is a dwelling unit, under the code now, which required toilet facilities. It has an iteration of requirements, one of which was toilet-
Then that goes back to the grandfathering many years ago.
We can agree that, at the time this ordinance came into effect, it did not meet the criteria of a dwelling unit. So, it might qualify as a dwelling unit, because it existed prior to the, this, this definition, the ordinance, but when the definition went into effect, it did not meet this criteria. But I would also point out, as you are arguing, that it doesn't meet the criteria of an accessory building. So, I'm asking you, if you can tell me what it is, under the, does it meet any criteria under the text of this ordinance? And I understand your argument, that it's a grandfathered dwelling unit. And what I'm trying to get at is, does it qualify as a grandfathered dwelling unit, simply by virtue of the fact that it meets no other criteria in this ordinance?
Well, again, as I mentioned, that Mr. McDougal and others have found this to be a grandfathered dwelling unit. So, I, if it's not an accessory unit, it just leaves it as a dwelling unit, which I think clearly makes it a single-family dwelling unit under the RA zone.
You understand that we're reviewing the decisions of the code enforcement officers? So, his decision is not necessarily binding on us here. So, you have to convince us that it's a grandfathered dwelling unit. So, I want to know, what is it here? Is it, if it's a grandfathered dwelling unit, you have to convince me that it's no other criteria in this?
Well, again, that would assume that my underlying premise, that you really don't have jurisdiction to go back and review that, that you would disagree with that assertion. So, I do admit that, if you go back, that, I don't know, when's the grandfathering date?
Late 60s.
Late 60s, that, the, the history going back on this property is, is admittedly murky. I think that was the term Ben used, when, in his opening presentation. So, yes, that, that's difficult. But again, despite that, again, three code enforcement officers have found this to be a lawfully non-conforming dwelling unit.
Let's try to attack this from a different angle. If you have a, if you have a garage sitting on a lot, and there's no other structure on the lot, what is that structure, what, under our, under our code?
Well, that seems like a rhetorical question. Certainly a garage, yeah.
That seems to be what the issue really is.
But I would propose, what if three code enforcement officers said it was a single-family dwelling?
May I say something? It, it's been dwelled in since the mid-'90s. It is, it has been used as a dwelling. So, I'm not sure what you're saying. Are you trying to say that there's nothing there now? There's been a living unit there for those number of years. That's before we bought it.
If, if we do not assign deference to the CEO, the different CEOs' prior interpretations as to what this structure is, and we decide for ourselves what this structure is, we have to figure out what the structure is. So, the way that we would normally do that is, we would look at the definitions and the criteria for the definitions, and we would try to assign it into one of the permitted uses in the, in the RA district. It, in my opinion, doesn't meet accessory building or structure, because there's no principal building or structure on the same lot. In my opinion, it also doesn't meet dwelling unit, by virtue of the fact that it lacked plumbing when it was put in, in the late '90s, it sounds like.
It lacked plumbing when the first, when Lisa Newbold's system was done? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, by virtue of that, and this code existed at the time, it didn't meet dwelling unit at that time. But the building, obviously, it predates the, our ordinance. So-
Yeah, it does.
What I'm trying to get from you is, an argument, if we set aside what the CEOs have said, why is it a grandfathered dwelling unit, and not anything else under the ordinance?
I can tell- Well, I can tell you what I found out about the history of the building, prior to, as my attorney mentioned, the oldest piece of paper in the building file for this. The very first one is dated September 1996, and it's a letter from Lisa Newbold to Ernie McVane, saying, "Thank you so much for helping me, you know, in all these ins and outs with this," as if they'd been working on it. And she says, "As we've discussed before, with your permission, I want to have my septic, my new design changed. So, instead of just dealing with the main house, and a five-bedroom system, I want my plan changed, which you and I have discussed," she says, "on many occasions. My house will be a four-bedroom, and then, there'll be a one-bedroom in-law garage department in the little building. And with your permission, I'll continue to have it plumbed." Now, that's the oldest document in there. I talked to Lisa, and I said, "I got to believe you, you were obviously talking to him before then." And she said, "Yes, I was. All I did," and there's nothing to prove this, other than what these people have told me, "all I did was complete what Roger Putnam had started quite a while ago, because when Lisa bought the house, the garage had a kitchen in it, with electricity, it had a toilet, it had a bathroom, sort of, just with a toilet. It was waiting to have plumbing done, and Roger hadn't done that." So, I do know that much. Lisa got the water in, she got it livable in '97. I don't know if that helps at all, but-
Anyone else has any other questions?
And, just also, for the record, I didn't just start to sell property this, this few months ago, I think, my experience, but, my property has been on, on and off the market, the big house. Unfortunately, since 2007, I had it listed four different times, or five different times, I've bought, and I'm, I'm a real estate agent. I only ever had the main house for sale. So, it shouldn't have been a surprise to the other neighbors in Delano, that that's all I was selling, because every single time I'd headed on the market, it was always the big house. And it wasn't just until this past December, when I was approached by several of the trustees, saying, you know, "We'd like to know what your intention is. Do you plan on selling these separately?" And I said, "I've always planned on that. Every time it's been on the market, that's how it's been offered." So, I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any other questions, or any of the board members, for the applicant? Okay. Why don't we turn to the public comment portion of the presentation? And I know we have a couple of attorneys representing various neighbors, so I would like to step to the microphone and-
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Bruce McLaughlin. Am I speaking loud enough?
Barely.
I'm an attorney representing a number of residents of Delano Park, who are neighbors of the applicant. Specifically, I represent John Staples, Scott Raspa, James and Nancy Martin, Arlen, and Jennifer Marshall, Sarah Ladazinski, Cray Sims, Robert and Linda Koppelman, Shanna Schrader, and Charles Lee, who are all on record opposing this appeal. I'm not going to repeat the analysis I put in my written submission, although I may need to go back over some of it, in response to some of the statements that were made here tonight. I would like to briefly comment on some just general principles of zoning law that are at play in this, this appeal. I mean, there's a very, very, very fundamental principle of zoning law, that non-conformities are to be decreased and eliminated whenever possible, and not increased or expanded. And that's based on a principle of fairness. For, for non-conformities that are grandfathered, we acknowledge that we don't retroactively apply the rules to those properties, and we allow those grandfathered, non-conforming uses to continue. But after the rules go into effect, any change or development of any property, including the non-conforming properties, have to apply equally to the rules of the ordinance. It's, that's fairness, too. It would be totally unfair to the other property owners, if the non-conforming lots get to continue to ignore the rules. They're allowed to, to the extent that they existed before the ordinance, but afterwards, the rules apply equally. And it would be unfair, in this case, to my clients and other neighbors in Delano Park, Delano Park, to allow this request of the applicants to go forward. They've basically requested that this non-conforming lot, with a non-conforming structure, and a non-conforming use, be allowed to be developed further. The historical record is a little bit murky. I think the term murky's been used a couple of times here tonight. It's not clearly established, I don't think, in the documents, that the lot did pre-exist the ordinance, that the structure pre-existed the ordinance. But I think there's general consensus that that's true. So, the lot and the structure are considered grandfathered, legally existing zoning characteristics. The use, however, I think there's general consensus, that it did not pre-exist the ordinance, is not a grandfathered use, can't be considered a grandfathered dwelling, or a grandfathered dwelling unit, or any other kind of-
Would you dispute that it was a seasonal dwelling with no plumbing, historically?
I don't think there's anything in the record that it was that, at the time the ordinance was enacted.
So, you would, you would say that there's no evidence that it was ever a seasonal dwelling with no plumbing, prior to adoption of the ordinance?
Right, and it is the applicant's burden to, to prove that legal, non-conforming status. So, it seems to me, that it's pretty clear, that we have a non-conforming lot, non-conforming structure, and a, an apartment use with some plumbing, as of 1997, that was allowed by either Mr. McVane, or Mr. Smith, or both. As I've explained in my written submission, I, I don't understand how anybody can read the record and not come to the conclusion that it was allowed as an accessory dwelling unit. And Mr. McDougal has correctly interpreted as such, that that was an allowance as an accessory dwelling unit. Tom, Mr. Jewell is absolutely correct. Such a use is not proper in the ordinance. Accordingly, Mr. McDougal has concluded that the approval as such, back in 1997, was not legally authorized. So, at that point in time, you've got a use that was improperly authorized by the code enforcement officer. It was not authorized by the zoning ordinance, and I believe Mr. McDougal is generously characterizing that now, as a non-conforming use, that he's willing to allow to exist, because of the decision that was made by the code enforcement officer back in 1997, but it-
Where's that decision, when was-
When was that decision in 1997? What date?
I don't have it.
Was it before or after June 4?
June 4. And what would be the significance of that date?
Well, I'm looking at Section 19-4-3A to B, "Nonconforming Lots," and the provisions applicable to contiguous developed lots, which provides that two or more contiguous developed nonconforming lots, or parcels in common ownership as of June 4, 1997, may be conveyed separately or together, even if all or some of the lots do not meet the dimensional requirements of this ordinance, if a principal use or structure exists on each lot.
Well, if I understand, I don't have that section in front of me, but if I understand what you're saying, first of all, these are not contiguous lots.
Okay.
And the garage is not a principal structure.
Is the, what separates them, just the road?
Somebody else can give a better account of that. Maybe David would answer that.
There's a whole nother lot in between them.
Yeah.
So, basically, historically, the horse barns are all put down together away from everyone's houses, or something along those lines?
Right. And in that light, I think it's important to recognize that this micro lot is one of four micro lots that were created, I believe, after the original subdivision. This is not your typical grandfathered lot, which is one of many similar or identical lots in a subdivision, all being created with the intent of developing a house lot on it. These were specifically created as carriage house lots or garage lots. The other three of the four continue to be used for that intended use of a garage or carriage house. This lot is the only one that has been, I would argue, erroneously allowed to be used otherwise with an apartment above the garage.
So, the other three are simply garages, or horse barns, if you will?
No.
No?
No. There's one garage on the lot...
Let's hear from the...
No. I'll have the president of the trustees, Bill Lavery, speak.
My name is Bill Lavery. I'm president of the Board of Trustees. There are four lots in that one lot that was divided, 46A, B, C, and D. One has a structure on it that is a garage structure, or a carriage house structure, most likely, because it was built that way up above the ground. There's a garage with a dwelling above it. On the furthest lot that goes out to Shore Road, which is owned by the people, they're owned separately. So, A is on the road that's owned by one person in there. Their lot is owned by them. The next lot is owned by the same people out here with the carriage house, and then they own the next lot. So, there's four lots. None of them are contiguous to each other as to ownership. There is one other lot that has a large carriage house on it. The one on the road has never been done anything with. And the other lot that they have, I don't know what's there. I thought it was a septic system, but I do not know that.
So, for clarity, is there another lot that has a dwelling unit in it?
No.
Oh, okay. So, this is the only one of the four that has a dwelling unit? Okay.
Okay. That was the question.
But the main point was, these were not created as house lots?
Understood. Exhibit A to the appellant's submission, and Exhibit, which is from 1996, July 22, 1996, and Exhibit B from September 9, 1997, both refer to the building as having a preexisting garage apartment. So, just so you're aware, the record has, as of July 22, 1996, at least there was a representation in a letter from the owner at the time, that there was a garage apartment in existence at the time in the garage.
Right. I understand there's some reference in the record that the apartment use might have preexisted without plumbing. But I don't think there's anything in the record to establish that it preexisted back to '58, or whenever the ordinance was enacted. So, the decision in '97 was, I believe, correctly characterized by Mr. McDougal, and he can correct me if I'm mischaracterizing him, was an illegal unauthorized decision under the ordinance. And for that reason, it has to be considered generously, I think, a nonconforming use. What's particularly alarming, I think, about this case is that the applicants are relying on this improper prior decision that created a nonconformity to allow a greater nonconformity. And that just can't be. I mean, it can't be, when we have a fundamental principle of zoning law, that we don't want to increase nonconformities, to allow a previous mistake that created a nonconformity to be the basis for allowing this mistake.
Under our ordinance, setting aside the interpretations from the various CEOs, under our ordinance, how do you characterize a garage that is on a lot with no other building?
It's gotta be a garage, I guess.
Well, is it an accessory structure? Is it a dwelling unit? It needs to fall into one of the criteria. How should we categorize a garage by itself on a lot?
Well, first of all, I don't know exactly what the word said back in 1997, or, and regardless, the garage is a nonconforming grandfathered structure. So, I'm not sure you need to figure out what it is.
From my perspective, it seems like they're made, it's a little murky, as the appellant's noted. It's unclear what all was occurring there. But at least as of 1996, there potentially was a seasonal dwelling akin to a camp that you find all over Maine, that didn't have any plumbing. And such a seasonal dwelling is often considered a livable unit where towns will let someone come in and put plumbing and turn it into a year-round building. So, such seasonal dwelling units are often, such seasonal structures are often considered dwelling units. And that's the angle I'm currently coming at this question from, unless you can explain to me why it should not be considered a grandfathered dwelling, which is basically what the prior CEO characterized it as.
Well, that's what you've been told tonight, what he characterized. I don't think there's anything written in the record saying that.
So, what I see is a lot that existed that is clearly a nonconforming lot, a structure that's existed for decades, that at least as far back as 1996, had an apartment in it that someone was occupying without plumbing.
But that can't be a dwelling unit, under our definition, unless it has toilet facilities.
So, if it predates that definition as a seasonal unit, I would deem that a grandfathered dwelling unit, which is in effect what the prior CEO characterized it as.
I don't know what the definition was, yeah. I will say that it might help you to look at the definition of principal building, which would include even a garage. I know we normally think of a garage as an accessory, but the definition of principal building is broad enough to include just a garage.
And I think it's important to reiterate that tonight, there's been a number of phrases and words presented to the board that find no basis, that I'm aware of, in the written record, nor are they used in the written submission by the applicants. I don't believe there's anything in the written submission that says there's a grandfathered single-family dwelling. I didn't see that. Maybe I'm misremembering. But there is definitely nothing in the town's written record that calls it a grandfathered single-family dwelling. If you go to Mr. Smith's November 2005 letter to Ms. Guthrie, which I understood the written submission of the applicants to be almost based completely on that letter, that letter does not refer to a dwelling. Doesn't say grandfathered. It says, "a dwelling unit." That doesn't exclude the possibility of an accessory dwelling unit, and it's not a dwelling. The permitted use in this RA zone that might be applicable here is a dwelling, not a dwelling unit. And I don't think there's anything in the record indicating that historically, or at any time, this was more than an upstairs apartment over the garage. And clearly, that was the case in '97 and in 2005. All of the documents in '97 time period, as I think reiterated in 2005 and 2006, Mr. Frick's letter to the state in 2006 clearly says, "This is an accessory dwelling unit in-law apartment accessory to the principal dwelling on Lot 44." It's just unmistakable. Now, I'm getting back into what I say in my written submission, but I kind of feel the need to because of all the statements that were made here tonight.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Maybe it has no significance. I'm not sure. You tell me. Exhibit M to their submission is this executive committee meeting minutes from May 6, 2006, and they talk about converted carriage house, and they're talking about tax records for 46A and 3B, going back, I guess. It speaks for itself. I'll let you read it to the extent that you don't have in front of you. I'll let you look at it. I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do you reconcile, if anything, with...
So, this is the letter from Al Frick to Russell Martin?
No, sir. The, I have it as Exhibit M as in Mike.
M, okay. I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
And this is the executive committee meeting...
Correct.
...May 6. One of the documents I passed around is a subsequent note by one of the trustees in June of 2006, sending the vote that was taken in this meeting. And in fact, and Mr. Lavery, if need be, can confirm this, the lot was never assessed. Lot 46A was never assessed. So, the representation made in the written submissions by the applicants suggesting that this, after this point in time from Exhibit M, that it's been treated as a single-family dwelling assessed as such is just not true.
Well, isn't it an admission, basically, by the Delano Park Association, that the town had indeed considered it a one-family residence at this point in time? And despite the rescission that occurred later on, after receiving advice from counsel, they nevertheless made the statement at their meeting and adopted it in their minutes?
Well, it's an admission only to the extent that whoever wrote these minutes characterized the conversation this way, among a bunch of layperson trustees, understanding things as they, however they might have understood them at the time. But...
So, their belief that it was a residence based on, and I know what you're gonna, I'm gonna, I already know where you're going with it. Let me finish. The belief, whether mistaken or not, that it was a residence based on tax records, subsequent, or after this, this rescission from August 4, 2006, basically was negating this belief that they had because the tax records weren't, wasn't accurate in the first place?
Well, I would say, the best you could conclude from this is that these trustees understood that somebody was living there. And I don't think anybody's disputing that. As of 1997, obviously, somebody was living there, okay? But that doesn't mean it's a dwelling under your zoning ordinance, or it's a grandfathered dwelling under your zoning ordinance. And after they talked to an attorney, apparently, it was explained to them that somebody might interpret that exactly the way you're suggesting, and they were, "Yeah, oh, we don't want that." So, they corrected it. But it certainly doesn't have any, I mean, if the CEO's decision isn't binding on you, certainly the trustee's understanding of whatever might have existed at that time is certainly not binding on you, how you interpret your ordinance.
Well, I guess, I guess, find, you know, there is a certain level of symmetry, because you do have in Exhibit G, at the conclusion of Mr. Smith's November 9 letter, an acknowledgement that there is a garage in a one, therefore, in answer to your question, there's a garage and a one-family dwelling unit existing on Lot 46A. And then we go to Exhibit M, which are the minutes, effectively, six months later, which are acknowledging that the town has more or less determined that that is, that that dwelling is a, quote-unquote, residence.
Well...
For better or worse.
If I were you, I would prefer to rely on your code enforcement officer's interpretation of this letter, rather than the trustee's. And the letter says, "It's a garage with a dwelling unit." It doesn't say it's a dwelling.
I guess that's the part I keep struggling with, too, is that everything that I'm reading says that, hey, there's someone living up there, there's a bedroom up there, there's, you know, septic for it, but we're considering it a dwelling unit, only to the extent that it's linked to the other property. We're not considering it a separate dwelling unit. And that's, that distinction between accessory and principal is what I'm continuing to struggle with, especially now that they are in legally separate ownership.
Right.
What happens to that dependency that we've established historically, now that they have been sold separately? Do you then magnify that nonconformity by saying, "That's okay. We're gonna let you now make it into a house, too"?
I think that's a good word, magnify. That's what's happened incrementally here. There's been magnifications of nonconformities, and Mr. McDougal has correctly put the brakes on that. Unfortunately, I would consider, I think the applicants should be happy with Mr. McDougal's conclusion, that this is at least allowed to continue to exist, despite a number of improprieties, or however you want to characterize them, in the past. Speaking of which, and I understand that the applicants haven't had a chance to review Mr. Bischoff's letter, but I just would like to reiterate a point he makes, which is that I think there's a good case to be made, and I'll let him expand on this, but there's a good case to be made, that the 2006 permit from the state, which by the way, is not a town permit, was never properly extended. It expired in 2008. The septic wasn't expanded until 2009. So, there's a good case to be made that that permit wasn't even properly implemented or authorized.
David, do you have something to add to that? Because before he leaves at that point, if you want to add anything to it, you might as well just go ahead and keep going.
Thank you. I'm not David Bischoff. I represent the Hoops and Brill family that owns property in Delano Park, including all of the property surrounding 46A, except for the Common Road, the road that passes it. And it was an oversight, if Mr. Jewell and his partner didn't receive my submission at the same time, however valuable that submission was, you can still make your decision tonight without considering it. And what fundamentally my submission did was to adopt and incorporate, by reference, Mr. McLaughlin's submission, and then also to address the issue of the permits associated with the 1996-97 installation of the septic system that required the effluent lines. That was the first issue that I addressed. The second issue is to address the issuance of the permit in 2006, pursuant to which the now-existing septic system was installed in late December 2009. And so, on that point, the application, and it's in the submissions as exhibits, but the application to the state originally was made in October, October 19, 2006, following a letter from Mr. Frick to Mr. Martin of the Department of Environmental Health, saying, "We talked about this issue. You told me, Mr. Martin, that this system would qualify as a replacement system." Notwithstanding the concession that, at that time, the applicants did not have right title and interest to the entirety of the system for which they were seeking a variance to replace. So, they did not have right title and interest to the effluent lines that passed over the Common Road over to Lot 44, what I call the big house. So...
So, wait, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, Your Honor, yes.
The new septic for the, what I'm gonna call the little lot, so I don't have to keep the numbers straight, was installed as a replacement system for a portion of the septic existing on the big lot?
Yes, that's correct.
And did they add the bedrooms back in on the big lot? So, then they have a five...
Yes, they did, very shortly after. So, that application, notwithstanding its flaws, it also wasn't signed. But nonetheless, as I addressed in my submission, notwithstanding those flaws, the permit is... But nonetheless, as I addressed in my submission, notwithstanding those flaws, the permit issued from the state, and Mr. Smith received the permit as he is proper to do, and it looks like he issued the permit from the town on January 7, 2007. I'm sorry. Yes, 2008. No, I've got those numbers wrong. It's in my submission. But in any event, two, almost two years after the permit was issued by the state, and this permit is only of two years' duration, it expires at the end of two years. Ms. Dallas sent an email to Mr. Smith and requested an extension, a one-year extension of the permit that was issued by the state, the Department of Environmental Health. Mr. Smith, and again, this is the only record in the file associated with this extension. Mr. Smith emailed back saying that he put the request with your septic design. You're all set till January 7, 2010. I submit that Mr. Smith didn't have authority to issue that extension at that time. And so, when, and this isn't disputed, when in late December 2009, the septic system was installed, it was done so on an expired permit.
Although that was three years ago, at least, 2009.
Yeah. And importantly, that was, the installation of the septic system was my client's first knowledge of any issue associated with a sufficient septic system.
And they didn't challenge the code enforcement officer's extension or the installation of the septic system?
They had no knowledge of it.
Well, they knew it was being installed. You just said that they had knowledge.
Only after the fact. And again, it's...
But they didn't then challenge it within 30 days of receiving actual notice that it was a...
Well, constructive notice, Your Honor. Yeah, well, yes, constructive notice, but that part of the problem is that Delano Park is historically made up of summer homes. My clients are family. They don't live here. They live in California, New York, New Mexico, Massachusetts. They didn't see it until they got back here.
So, the problem, and this has happened with some of the other appeals, is there needs to be some level of finality that exists in the world. So, we can't have the ability for people to come in and challenge decisions that were made 5, 10, 50, 20, 50, 100 years ago. There has to be some level of finality, which is why we have this window of time that you can appeal a decision or raise a violation once you become aware of it in a situation like this, when it's based on a decision of the CEO.
Sure.
And here, they knew for at least a good number of years and never challenged it. They clearly didn't challenge it within 30 days of finding out about the fact that the septic system...
That's conceded, and that's absolutely true. There have been discussions with the code enforcement officer. Our position here is that we're opposing the appeal. I think Mr. McDougal, and I'll back up and say that my clients initially wanted to move to have the septic system completely ripped out and the use revert to that of the garage. Mr. McDougal heard my argument on that, and then he issued his decision, which we're here to defend against this appeal.
Could you touch on the timely...
Yes, sir.
Against what?
This appeal. We're here in opposition to the appeal.
Can you touch on the timeliness of the appeal? Do you have any argument? Do you have a serious argument that they don't get the one-day extension by virtue of...
No, it's a very strict argument. It's one that certainly is at your discretion to enforce or not. I think that it makes... Well, let me back up. Ordinarily, as people have commented in court and other proceedings, and certainly in other towns, there's a provision that permits you to file something on the next business day if the deadline falls on a holiday or on a Sunday, on a Saturday or Sunday. The ordinance doesn't call for that. So, a strict application of your ordinance does make this appeal untimely. Now, that is an argument. Certainly, you've got your discretion to exercise its enforcement or not. Fundamentally, though, the problem that my clients have with this is that on this tiny, tiny lot, a 4,000-square-foot lot, a garage has morphed into an accessory dwelling, what's been deemed to be an accessory dwelling with an apartment above, and with a separate septic system that is jammed into this very small lot. To now permit the appellant's to further their pursuit and to convert it to a single-family home on this very, very small lot is something that my clients strenuously object to, and which is why I've appeared and made my submission. Again, if, you know, I'll say, I'll take Tom at his word. If the submission didn't make it to Tom or to Paul, that's my oversight. Again, though, at the same time, I think a review of what Mr. McDougal did here would show that it was a constructive and well-thought-out and carefully constructed decision about a very difficult problem that he inherited, and at the same time, that some issues here are very clear and not in dispute. We've got some very good factual record with regard to certain parts of this. What Mr. McDougal inherited really was a mess, and he made, in our opinion, a very constructive interpretation of the situation. And I'll say this, my clients were seeking to enforce the provision... That required the two lots, 44 and 46A, to remain in singular ownership. There was a suggestion that it really wasn't a serious requirement, but I have a letter, and I could submit it. I don't have copies for the witnesses or for the other parties, but a copy from Ms. Newbold, who said on what looks like September 29, 1997, "I will do whatever paperwork is required to have this registered properly." Prior to that, she said, "I'd like it clearly stated in the registry of deeds that these two lots have been and will remain in single ownership. I sought to have a ruling, a decision from Mr. McDougal that required the singular ownership." Mr. McDougal, looking at the circumstances, and I don't mean to speak for him, I believe considered that there was a purchase-and-sale agreement on Lot 44, the bigger house, and he came up with a constructive solution that I think is as faithful to your ordinance as could be done while also taking into consideration the uncertainty of certain aspects of this record.
Thank you. Any other question?
Can I just... Sorry. I'm just, if I could, I'd just wrap up real quick with three points. It's the applicant's burden with this murky record. Rules about nonconformities are to be strictly construed and strictly applied against those seeking to get an expansion. And as Mr. Bischoff has said, Mr. McDougal's decision is basically impeccable and based on the written record, and I don't think can be credibly challenged based on the written record. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you wish to speak? Please.
Not to interrupt what you're gonna say, but if you could touch on what's the farthest-back evidence you have that this unit, that this structure was dwelled in? Is it 1996, or can you point to anything earlier than that? If you could touch on that.
From documents, I would say it's the seasonal is the oldest, but admittedly, it does not say this. It says there's no plumbing.
So, separate from the plumbing, imagine it's a, your standard main camp.
All right.
And the word is no plumbing.
The...
House in the backyard.
Card, the card, the assessor's card.
We don't have that in the record, so if you want that in the record, you...
Okay. I have it right here. The assessor's card calls it a seasonal, and that was, I'm not sure how they date them. It looks like it was done twice in '79 and '93. I can't tell which was done when.
So, it's up to you whether you want to submit that to us.
I'll submit it. That's fine. I know from...
Until you hand it to us.
I know from speaking to people who knew the prior owner, spent time there, it was a place for the Putnam's teenagers is what it was, and that was their intention to do that. And so, they started finishing it off, thinking they... Anyway. Did you...
Until we have that card, you have not submitted it into the record. And we don't have any evidence that it's been a seasonal dwelling since the '70s, so...
Sure. Yeah.
Yes. Ben would like to make a point.
Regarding the assessing record, I did go over the assessing record extensively with our assessor, who's been here since the late '90s. And he noted the May 17, 1994 note on the assessing card. Garage quarters, not usable, no disposal system, no plumbing, not used. That is the 1994 assessing characterization. The characterization of seasonal living quarters came after that.
So, the record in '94 indicated that it existed, but said that it had fallen into disuse in effect? Because it sounds like no plumbing from that perspective, but again, is this a main camp of the old days with...
Garage quarters. And what he said is it was probably carpeted for a game room, for kids to go up and play. But I don't think that constitutes a dwelling unit to allow your kids to go play above the garage.
But again, we're now at speculation, so if there's something from the '70s from the town saying it was a seasonal dwelling, that would be...
There is not. There's nothing...
Again, there's nothing in the rec... The earliest record in the building file is Lisa Newbold's letter, September '96.
So, just a few moments, you were talking about something from the '70s.
That is just based on my knowledge, what people have told me who were there. There's nothing in the rec... There's not a piece of paper that predates that letter, so...
That's why we asked for the paper.
Okay, that's why Ben was left with this task, because there's no, there was no file, or the file existed and it was misplaced in the change of...
So, the only indication that it was a seasonal dwelling back in the '70s is your speculation based on conversations with the prior owners?
Well, it says it on the card. I don't know when it was put on the card.
Would you like to see it?
Yeah.
That card pretty much represents what Lisa told me was the situation when she purchased it as well, that it was in the process. You see this electricity there? The second floor had been sheet rocked, and there were floors, this flooring in, et cetera. It was in mid-process.
Still bruising, Chris?
Yeah, go ahead, though.
Do, does anyone else have any questions on the board, Barry?
I had a couple of things I wanted to just correct and clarify for the record.
Sure.
Okay. The, there was mention made that there was no town permit issued. There was a town permit issued. It wasn't submitted as an exhibit. I have it here. I think, I'm not sure who just said that, one of you, David, that it was only the state. There is, there was a town permit issued. First, it was signed off by the state, as is required, and then it was signed off on by the town. And I did file for the extension to get the extra year's extension because my house hadn't sold, so I didn't, you know, I wasn't really sure where I was going with it. Hadn't sold, so...
This is for the sewer permit?
This is for the leach field to go on the site. Now, there was also some mention made about where the leach field is located, that it wasn't on my lot or something? Did you... Yeah, that's incorrect. Excuse me? That it's not... What? Oh, not you, not you. It was one of the attorneys.
If it'll make you feel better, we didn't hear that.
Good, okay. It's on, it's on one, it's all on 46A, okay? And it may be little, but it met the requirements for the state. It's not the type of thing that could even be allowed on a local level. It had to go to the state, and I went that route. As far as any indication in the file or in, yeah, in the file, that it was considered anything other than an accessory dwelling unit or an in-law apartment, the permits that were done for the septic when Lisa Newbold did hers in '96, '97, on the septic permit, and you have those in your exhibits, where it says disposal system to serve right in the middle of the application. There's boxes to check, and the third one says other. And on those with Lisa's, it was typed in in-law apartment. When my permit was done, on every application, whether it was the initial one, it was reviewed. It had to be updated by Al Frick because of the time factor. We were aware that it's not good forever, so we had, Al had to come in and review it again and say, okay, it still works. He's redated it and redated it. All of those say system, disposal system to serve, single-family dwelling unit. So, it is, it does show on this. So, that, to me, was some indication that the town, that the authorities were considering it that and not an in-law anymore.
Is that the subsurface disposal permit?
Yes.
Aren't those the only choices? You've either got an industrial one or you've got a residential one?
No. You have it, I don't know what exhibit it is in your packet, but there's three boxes. Number one says single-family dwelling unit, number of bedrooms. Box two says multiple, multiple family. Number three says other, and there's a blank.
Mm-hmm. What else would you be putting a septic in, other than something where people were living?
On Lisa's, it said in-law apartment because it was considered an other. I mean, I guess you'd have to ask Mr. Frick that, but her application clearly stated in-law apartment. My applications clearly say the use is for a single-family dwelling, and since that's what we're here to discuss, that was one of the things that I relied on.
So, from my perspective, your 1979 property card is probably your strongest argument. You basically have, the property card says that the first-floor basement is used for garage. It then says, under type dwelling, it lists the grade and everything else that it has. But at the same time, it then says occupancy garage. So, it's both characterizing it as a dwelling unit as garage. So, it indicates there's some dwelling going on in the '70s. But the problem you have to overcome is you could then have a comment in 1994 in the card indicating that that use is discontinued.
Which I can't explain, so...
Goes away.
I just know what happened from '96 forward. However, as far as what I relied on, mistakenly, we did not mention in the brief all the meetings that I had with Code Officer Smith. I do have a copy of, some of the appointments were actually booked ahead, so there's notes. We did discuss it. I'm not even sure how many times I met with him. Every time he met, when he met with the architect, he met to discuss what could be done with a single-family dwelling. And just to clarify here, it may be clear to you, but I'm not sure that it's clear to my neighbors that are having such an issue with this. We're talking about my wish to expand. I know that I can't expand the footprint. I know that if I want to redo this building, basically, the building is a dump. I want to do something to it. And I, in fact, I met with Ben about the second week into his new employment here, showed him my drawings, and said, this is what I want to do to this. If it's a single-family dwelling, which I have it characterized as, and I can finish the bottom floor as well, you're allowed to do that with a single-family dwelling. So, I could make a nice-looking, you have some renderings, I just did a couple to give you an idea. I can create a property that has about 1,350 square feet, that has a faux carriage door look on it, no garage space. It would be two bedrooms, two baths. It would actually improve the value of the neighborhood because that would be a property that's probably worth in the 400 easily.
That's a little beyond the scope of...
Okay. Well, I want to clarify expansion then, okay? My goal is not to expand anymore on that lot. I know I can't go beyond that footprint, so I'm not sure what my neighbors think, but that's not what I mean by expansion.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Yeah, we're gonna, any questions? Okay, we're gonna close the public comments section of the hearing and move on to the much-anticipated board deliberations.
I think the first issue has to be, do we have, was the appeal timely?
Can I answer that two ways? I agree. I think we need to address the timeliness issue first. I know that the code says it's a strict 30 days. The 30 days fell on a Sunday. I'm gonna, from my perspective, I'm gonna employ the common sense rule, which is if it was received... if it was, if it was received on that Monday or the thirty-first day, then I'm, you know, I'm, I'm fine with the ti-- I don't have a timeliness issue from my perspective.
I agree with you. I would like to say that, you know, our ordinance doesn't allow us to do that. There's no provision in there that says we can give you that extra day, like, is in rules of civil procedure and that kind of thing. I'm willing to do it here, but I think if we were to see that as a pattern, we would certainly want to revisit whether we're giving those kind of extensions without authority in the ordinance.
Well, if, I would, uh, say that we don't have, uh, that it was untimely if we deem it us providing an extension, because I don't believe we have the power to issue an extension. So, I would like for us to decide, just as a general matter, if the deadline falls on a weekend or a holiday, do we interpret the code as permitting filing on the very next business day? I'd like to consider it that way, of course.
I, I, I don't. I think that if you, if, if the thirtieth day falls on a holiday or a weekend, then you go to the next, the first business day thereafter. That's, that's my view.
I, I would agree, although they're rather suddenly in the thirty days, but irrelevant. I would agree that we do indeed accept this, because the thirtieth day is on a Sunday.
For not to opine on that question.
Jeffrey? What do you think? I mean, the other argument, of course, is, fine, you got a weekend or a holiday coming, you get it in on the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth day. But the ordinance doesn't say that either.
And we previously have basically taken the position that if you're untimely, you're untimely. In a number of decisions over the last couple of months. But never, of course, this close.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's, yeah, we're talking months or weeks. We're not talking twenty-four hours.
I don't think we're talking about the deadline, thirtieth being on a Wednesday and they follow it on Thursday. We're talking about the deadline falling on a...
A weekend or a holiday.
A weekend or a holiday, and then filing it the next business day, right? I, I don't find it much of a problem with that, but...
I think for this, I mean, you, you raise a question, I think for this board, I mean, again, I'm, I'm one voice or two voices, but I think that, um, it is, it is a thir-- we know it's a thirty-day appeal period, but I, you know, again, for clarification purposes, I would say that the thirtieth day, if it falls on a non-business day, i.e. a holiday or a weekend, then you go to the first business day for that, for that, for that expiration. And I guess we needed to, you know, we don't, we, we can decide it as a specific, specific to this application, or we can decide it as a, as a, as a board application.
Either way, I'd like the, um, the vote in the motion to be such that it's at least clear enough that the, to the extent it is appealed, it can be succinctly addressed by, uh, the judge if it's appealed to.
Yeah, so you want a finding of fact to include the timeliness issue?
Rather than us just saying it's timely, period. Why is it timely? I'd like an explanation why we find it timely under our ordinance.
We'll put that in the record. Absolutely. But you still haven't told me what, you still haven't told me what you guys are gonna do.
I'm torn. I'm torn. It's, it's a good point that our ordinance does not, we are aboard a limited jurisdiction, and it does say it has to be within thirty days, yet in every other context, legal context that I'm aware of, if it falls on a business, on a weekend or a holiday, you extend it to the next business day. But the point was made that our ordinance does not actually say that anywhere.
But this is a quasi...
Very true, which is why I then, I'm not saying bright line rule, no, you had to be within thirty days, so...
You're Mr. Brightline.
So, I would say it's timely by virtue, and I would interpret our ordinance as permitting filing on the next business day if the deadline falls on a weekend or holiday.
Do we want to take a vote on that? Probably should take a vote on that. So, why don't we take a vote as to whether... Yeah, let's take a vote as to whether the, the... Well, we need to have a motion as to, you know, whether the application as submitted was submitted on a timely basis under our ordinance.
I move for a finding that the app, that the appeal as submitted is timely by virtue of the fact that the thirtieth day fell on a weekend or holiday, and our ordinance permits the appeal to be filed in such situations on the very next business day. That would then require a second.
Any discussion? Or further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so five-zero, I guess, on the timeliness question. Okay, so the appeal will be heard. So, is it an accessory dwelling?
So, I would just note that the property card is both supports in, undermines their argument. We've got nineteen-seventy-two, or nineteen-seventy-nine. It's both checked as a garage, but then it also says that the basement is used for garage. And then otherwise, under category dwelling, then describes the construction and the replacement costs. It doesn't describe it under garage. From my perspective, it indicates in seventy-nine, this was being used as a dwelling. We then turn to the, the next page. We have date listed, and it's either ninety-three or oh-two. It's unclear, since both were marked here, but given the fact that normally these are, my understanding, filled in the first time, and this was just the revision. At le-- either ninety-three or oh-two, it's indicated that it's a single-family seasonal occupancy. It's not categorized as a garage in whatever of these dates applies. So, at that point in time, it is, again, being classified as seasonable, seasonal occupancy. We then, unfortunately, unfortunately for the appellant, fortunately for the, the abutters who are opposing, have a comment in ninety-four saying, um, as was observed, garage quarters not usable. No D system, no plumbing, not used, which would indicate an abandonment of the seasonal dwelling. Which, from my perspective, then makes it no longer necessarily a seasonal dwelling if this was a true abandonment of that use in nineteen-ninety-six. I might have misspoken and said ninety-four.
If you take it forward from there, everything in the record has the two properties linked. The big property and the little property linked together, and essentially saying, you can have a residence for, basically, an in-law apartment-type use above the garage, as long as you keep it together with the big lot. And improperly, that was not recorded, despite multiple kind of requests that it be so and representations that it would be so. And perhaps maybe a misunderstanding about how that was done, perhaps maybe an impression that submitting a letter to the town, asking that that be done was sufficient to achieve that result. And now, a situation where the lots have been separated, and a septic for one to two bedrooms with no garbage disposal, et cetera, is installed and permitted on this small lot, and the big lot has been sold separately. And while generally, I think our ordinance is to be read to encourage development of, you know, use of your own property, in the instance where there's a non-conforming use and a non-conforming lot, I think the opposite is true, and that we're supposed to interpret the provisions of the ordinance strictly. And I think that what Ben's letter does in terms of laying out how that property can continue to be used, how it has been historically, but not expanded without zoning board approval as a non-conforming use slash lot, is fair.
I would agree with most of that, with the exception of it being a non-conforming use, because to the extent that it was used as a dwelling, that is a permitted use.
But nothing that we have now, everything that we have now is still showing it as an accessory, because those two uses were tied together, even though they're on separate lots. And I think you can say that was a principal garage, maybe, um, now that they're separated. But we, I don't think the town ever anticipated that they would be separated. And I think that reading that to be an accessory dwelling unit is a fair read.
Absolutely. And that originally bothered me, the fact that they were separated when all of the paper record indicates they were not to be separated. But at the same time, I also see how the former CEO would have looked at this property and said, it does not fall into any of these categories cleanly. Because as you noted, technically, it wouldn't be an accessory building by virtue of the fact it's on a lot.
I guess I take it, I agree with what's, what's been said, but I, I also, I also put a lot of, um, weight on kind of the character of the neighborhood, the character of the lot, the opinions of the neighbors. And this is a four-thousand-square-foot lot with, you know, trying to shoehorn a residence in or dwelling. And, um, I'm not sure that's the intent of the ordinance or of the district. And we certainly have heard from, um, many of the abutters, probably all the abutters, certainly the majority of the neighbors, that they're against characterizing this as a, um, as a dwelling unit. And, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to, to, to deny the appeal. Period. Jeffrey, I don't know how you feel about it.
It really is, it hasn't been separated yet. You know, the big house hasn't been sold yet.
Yes, it has.
It has, yeah. The, the letter was, um... It was put up for sale multiple times. In March of this year, the CEO issued, um, yeah, an additional decision or interpretation as to what the, the smaller structure was. Shortly thereafter, the property, the larger property was sold to a separate owner, so they are now in different hands. And that was what my original question as to, were the owner, the, the owners of the smaller lot, were they aware at the time of that sale that there was previously this restriction, saying you can't split them up? And they were.
I'm sorry, what was, was sold as a separate, the big house was sold separately, correct? The title passed?
Yes.
Title passed?
Yes.
You got, they got a mortgage and everything. So, the other house is a separate lot, but no real status because of what we're saying tonight.
So, they're, they're not abutting, they're... So, it totally separate ownership now. There was previously restrictions saying you're not allowed to split up ownership.
It's very complicated, and I would say that it's not a dwelling.
So, what was that?
It's not a dwelling. I don't think that was the original intent way back. And that would be my, uh, opinion.
Thank you.
In, how would you address the town's record from either ninety-three or oh-two, characterizing it as a dwelling?
Well, aren't there some, aren't there later documents?
That's the problem. That's the problem. I don't, I don't agree with the interpretation that you, that you have with this building record. I think this building record, I, I see what it says there, but I see it says multiple things on this, and I think that the whole thing is, it, it, it just creates... And I think there's multiple issues in this, in this appeal. But I think that this is a non-conforming issue, and I don't think that the ordinance and the intent is to continue expanding the non-conformity of a lot. I think that's just not what the intent is. It's not what it's designed for. I mean, I, I think there's a ton of issues, but I think it's a, to me, it's somewhat simplistic when it comes down to the fact that I, I think it's a non-conforming situation. I think that you just, the, the ordinance is not designed to continue expanding the non-conformity of a lot. I just...
Chris, if you look at the, look at the card that I'm looking at, and maybe, maybe, maybe there's confusion. Mine has no assessment, there's, there's no figure. It says not usable, no disposal system, no plumbing, not used. I know there may be a later one.
Yep, yep, an earlier one, yep.
An early, well, whatever. But again, my own opinion would be what I, what I've stated, that, um, it's, it's not a dwelling.
So...
Irrespective of what you're gonna read me.
The, the page you're pointing at, I agree, it's, it's almost fatal to their argument, because it shows that there was a break in usage as a dwelling. The nineteen-ninety-six paper, because it's their burden to show the continuous use. I'm just noting for the record that they do have an argument that in ninety-three and in nineteen-seventies, one of these is nineteen-seventy-nine, it was being categorized as far back as that as being used as a dwelling. So, we might want to say, no, we don't want to characterize this as a dwelling. It, it, that's not what was intended. That's not what the neighbors view it as. It doesn't fit in with the characteristics of the neighborhood. But they have a legal right, to the extent that they have continuously engaged in use of this building as a dwelling, going back to at least the seventies. Legally, they have a right to continue to do that.
So, why are they here?
But, but, but just to, just to clarify that too, aside from the abandonment, the dwelling piece was never a principal use. First, it was tied to the big house, and the principal use was the big house. And now, that they're separate, I don't, I don't think you can then convert what was historically, at best, an accessory use into now being the principal use, such that you can morph that structure into being a private, single-family home, from being, at best, a seasonal dwelling, accessory with no toilet, no kitchen, no...
So, instead of characterizing it as a, kind of a grandfather standalone dwelling by virtue of the fact that, yes, they were not abutting, but they were in shared ownership, it was instead, in some ways, a grandfathered accessory building, or accessory dwelling, even though it doesn't fit cleanly into any of the definitions in the ordinance.
But I, but I think to piggyback on that, and I don't think this matters too much for, for me personally, but I look at it as, it's, its primary use was, was a garage. It was a garage then, even if they were playing pool in the top, even if someone was in a sleeping bag for a night in the top. It's been a garage. It's a garage now. It always, that's the one constant that it has been since it was constructed. It was a garage. Now, maybe, I mean, that's what we have. That's what we have in front of us, and that's, you know, it was, I mean, the, the document, the building record that you're pointing to, yeah, it says the single family, but it also says garage. And the one thing it doesn't say is abandoned as a garage. What it says is abandoned as something where someone might have been hanging out, maybe, living in seasonally. But it, it's been a garage. I mean, to me, I keep looking at all this. I think there's, well, what's the one constant? Well, it's, it's a garage. And, but I still think, to me, at the end, it's, it really comes down to the non-conformity issues that you're touching on, and I, I just don't think that you, you can expand that.
Do we want to add, um, within the conclusion, the fact that it is a, um, that it's, you know, that, that the appeal is upheld as a, as a, or denied as a, um, that it's an accessory dwelling? Do we want to put that in there as a, as a conclusion? Or do we just, or do we just leave it that, that the CEO's conclusion, um, that the property, lot forty-six A is an accessory dwelling, is upheld?
Do we think it's accurate to call it an accessory dwelling?
Right, but you, well, you can, again, we're always supposedly being asked either to uphold or deny the, the appeal, and depending upon the vote, you know, the vote can speak for itself.
I frankly think that accessory dwelling unit is generous. I mean, that's as good as it gets.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but... Just wondering if we need to put any further clarification in the, on the record.
I think his decision asks, that's what he says, right?
Right. You know, it's, I think the decision itself is, is fine, as far as the, you know, the...
And I, I agree with what Sherrana was saying. I think that the decision of the code enforcement officer is a very fair one. And I do think calling it, uh, an accessory dwelling is really about as good as it gets, quite frankly.
Although we don't see it as being accurate.
And I agree. I'm not, I'm not even sure that's what it is. I'm not sure...
It is now. I mean, now that has been transformed because of the sale of the other property. We, it has morphed into the principal building, because there's no other principal building. So, what else are you gonna call it at this point, now that the two lots are in separate ownership? You can't say it's accessory anymore, because there's no other building.
Yeah.
Well, what about the fact, are we viewing the prior agreement with the town that permitted the revised septic system on the condition that the property stay with a, a single ownership? Are we accepting the representation that the CEO basically removed that? Are we accepting the representation that the CEO basically removed that restriction verbally?
I think that's irrelevant. I don't think I can...
We don't need to go there. I just looked over his, the March 29th letter. I think it pretty much frames the fact pattern in his decision, so I don't think we need to embellish on it.
So, is the current, is the current building a, now the principal building? And if so, can we call it an accessory dwelling unit? And if not, what is it?
Any idea what the assessment would be as what it is now, a garage? Have you been issued a new assessment?
No, the property's closed. I mean, the examiner considers it a dwelling because some...
No, no, you know, if they get, if they've given you an assessment, maybe it's not relevant.
Barry, we've, you know, we've closed the Q and A.
We did. Sorry.
The garage piece, I mean, I find this definition tough to understand, what, what the and/or piece is going to? The and/or attached garage? So, is it, can it be a single-family dwelling unit within an attached garage? And if so, I mean, that's what this is, but...
You would argue that the dwelling unit is above the garage that's below it?
Again, I don't, I don't know whether we really need to go there. The CEO has, has ruled that this is an accessory dwelling unit.
And I don't agree with that.
Okay.
The association should have blocked the sale.
Although, we have nothing in the record indicating that the association had any right to enforce this restriction, instead it was a town restriction that existed. To the extent that the town didn't even revoke the restriction, which is the only thing we have in the record, is verbal description of a discussion where supposedly the town revoked the restrictions.
The only other thing, what do you want to call it? I mean, the only thing you could call it is a principal structure? What is that, what is that doing? What is that addressing?
It's supposed to holes in the zoning ordinance is the problem.
But, I mean, what, so we've got a subordinate dwelling unit, the apartment, subordinate to the garage, and then the dwelling unit is now the principal use?
So, the dwelling unit is the accessory dwelling unit? And it's subordinate to the principal structure, which is a garage?
And the definition of principal building is broad enough to include a garage?
It's non-conforming use. Subordinate, accessory to the building, it's a garage? But it requires, in order for it to, it requires the dwelling unit to be the principal use to meet that definition, to meet the definition of accessory dwelling.
I don't think it does. I don't think it does. I think that's the and/or language, and/or attached garage in which a single, so I think they're saying that as separate, if you've got an attached garage and you've got a single-family apartment in it that's basically your, you know, the primary use of that building, you're not really using the garage anymore, then that is also a separate accessory dwelling unit, that that's an and/or separate category from this first section of the definition.
It's the rule of the last antecedent.
Yes, that.
I am ashamed that I'm aware of that rule.
It may not be grammatically correct, but I think that's what it's saying.
The rule of the last antecedent would say that it applies to the attached garage and not to the prior items in the list, at least in this instance.
So, is there a suggested redefinition of what this is? Because if not, then, again, I, I think we've, we've, I think we've all kind of opined as to the CEO's letter, the CEO's concluded, made a conclusion, if we're going to affirm it, let's affirm it, if we're not, let's deny it.
And look at what it is.
Garage isn't designed to be residences. It's a non-conforming use of a, isn't it a non-conforming use of a garage?
Because of the fact that it was not in lawful existence as of the effective date of this ordinance by virtue of this statement that it was abandoned in '94.
And that, I might have spoken before saying a non-conforming lot, I meant non-conforming use.
It's a non-conforming lot too.
Yeah.
It's only 4,000 square feet.
I mean, I keep thinking of this as, this is a, just, it's a non-conforming use of a garage. That's fine, but I'm not going to expand it, not going to let them start changing the whole thing.
On a non-conforming lot.
Right. That's the way I see it, but I, I mean, I could be the dissenting...
Are we ready to vote?
I'm getting there. Christopher, get there. I like your non-conforming use argument. I actually think that might be the proper...
No one ever likes my argument. Like all your arguments, I'm always quiet.
I think it would be, it's a prin, the principal, it's the principal building, it's principal use as a garage, and since after '94, according to what's in the record, at some point it began being used as a dwelling unit of some sort at some point, but that would be non-conforming.
And it is, and I agree with Joanna, I mean, it is a non-conforming lot too.
Although it's, although use as a dwelling is a permitted use in the district, so I don't know if you'd call it a non-conforming use.
The accessory dwelling unit is a non-conforming use.
If you characterize, oh, conditional uses, it's a conditional use. Under 961.
What page are you on?
My version of the printout, 59. It's 1961 C. 3.
What is it you're searching for?
I don't think we can classify it as an accessory dwelling unit. I disagree with that interpretation from the CEO. So, if, if the issue was simply, is it accurately classified? I think the answer is no, but I think we do know, I think we do everyone a disservice if we don't say what it is as part of this decision, because then it goes down, the CEO doesn't know how we expect him to interpret it, so he can then take a shot at the dark, shot in the dark, and then it comes back to us and then say, ah, no, you got it wrong this time too. We also don't know what it is, but it's not the CE. So, ideally, I'd like for us to say what it is.
What do you think it is?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, because I, coming into this hearing, I didn't know what it was, because it doesn't fit anything under our ordinance.
It doesn't fit anything else, any better.
You like the property assessment record, and the property assessment record calls it two things, and then one of those two things was abandoned, so then it comes back by default as to the one.
So, it becomes a garage, but then, but then a accessory dwelling unit is a permitted conditional use if they sought a permit from us, which they did. So, then I would accept it being described as an accessory dwelling unit under that argument, and I would uphold the CEO's decision.
Do you want to put the argument in as an additional finding of fact? Yes.
I reached the final conclusion that I will agree with the CEO's decision that it's an accessory dwelling unit, which is a, and the reason I would reach that conclusion is viewing it as a conditional use to the garage, which that seems, is that even permitted? Potentially. But, I mean, go ahead and make a motion if you want. While I struggle to figure out how to characterize this thing.
Go back to this to...
The argument is that it's, that it's a, that the dwelling is a, that, yeah, that the upstairs is essentially a conditional use of the garage?
Which I don't think, but then I look at accessory dwelling unit, and I understand the, the argument in parsing the language, but looking at it, I think the fair reading is that the single-family dwelling unit has to be the principal use for all of, everything in the list at the end of the day. So, I don't think it's an accessory dwelling unit. But I don't know what it is. It's primarily a garage, I'll tell you that. Maybe we just leave it at that, but I don't, this could be ping ponging back and forth at that point.
Yeah, I don't want to ping pong till midnight.
Well, not with us, but after we reach our conclusion. And for all I know, the rest of you are going to say the CEO got it right, it's an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, I take, you know, I take a broader view in that, again, or way more limited view perhaps, which, which is that if we have an appeal which, of the CEO's March 29th decision, and we've heard the evidence, and we've more or less given our comments as to whether we believe the appeal should be denied or upheld, and I, I think that the decision, I mean, I, I think the vote can be, you know, as simple as are we, are we affirming the decision or are we denying the decision, or the appeal rather, I'm sorry?
And I would like to add too, that in my opinion, the definition of principal building is broad enough to include this structure. The dwelling use to the extent it's historically existed has never been more than accessory to something and cannot by separation of the lots, which was historically a condition of installing the septic, evolve and be magnified into making that dwelling use the principal use such that that non-conforming lot can then be developed with an ever more non-conforming use. And so, I think that the accessory dwelling unit definition is the best fit in the ordinance. It's not perfect, but that is the nature of definitions in an ordinance where you have multiple variations on a theme within a town. And to call it something that is a conforming use such that it can continue to be expanded upon is not a fair reading of the ordinance or of the history of this property.
Okay, let's take a vote.
If that passes, what can they do with that building?
Continue to use it how it is now.
I'm sorry, say that again?
They can continue to use it how it is now.
So long as it's subordinate to a garage.
Okay, and they can't convert it to a house?
It kind of already is.
Well, not really, I don't know who would buy that as a house. Okay.
There's, there's dwelling quarters and buying everything else, and a garage. And basically, the decision that Joanna had proposed was the primary structure is the garage. The living structure is subordinate to the garage and above the garage, and that it would be permitted so long as, it would, it would be classified as an accessory dwelling unit. And because of pre-existing, it would continue as an accessory dwelling unit. If you ever tried to turn it into the primary unit, it would no longer be an accessory dwelling unit, you would have gone beyond what was grandfathered in or previously permitted.
A gratuitous remark. The association should buy it.
So, does someone make a motion to concerning the appeal?
I move that we deny the appeal and uphold the findings in the March 29, 2013 code enforcement officer letter to Mrs. Dallas and Mr. Levy.
Second?
Sir.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. You're, you're...
Yeah.
Okay.
Second, and then vote against it.
So, four, one to deny the appeal of Heather Dallas.
And the one was because of the, the statement about affirming all of the findings in the letter, not necessarily the conclusion.
Okay, I guess I didn't really do the, okay. So, the finding of fact is the administrative appeal of MAP U. 7, Lot 46A, 502 Delano Park, applicant Heather Dallas. Heather Dallas and Howard Levy are the owners of record of the property at MAP U. 7, Lot 46A at 502 Delano Park. On March 29, 2013, this code enforcement officer sent a letter to Heather Dallas and Howard Levy regarding the use of their property. On April 29, 2013, Heather Dallas submitted an administrative appeal application because she does not agree with the letter from the CEO. And that appeal has been denied four to one. An additional finding of fact is that the appeal was filed on a timely basis by virtue of the 30th day of the, of the appeal deadline fell on a Sunday, I believe, and the board allowed it for the next business day, which is the 31st day on a Monday. Okay.
Thanks for all of that.
Yeah, thank you. Probably three more.
We have to be out by 10. Be faster, much faster. We have to be out by 10.
We're concerned if we couldn't start.
Was it 10 or 11?
11? They can all throttle me later.
Let me just get organized here.
It looks like we're taking a short break.
Yeah, we're going to take a, a short five-minute break. Yeah, we're going to take a, a, a short five-minute break. Okay. Are we, call the meeting back in adjournment? Next item on our agenda is to hear the request of Timothy, is it Gosh? Gosh, sorry. Junior of 1267 Sawyer Road, MAP R5 Lot 55, for administrative appeal of a notice of violation and order of corrective, or for corrective action dated April 9, 2013.
My name is Timothy Gosh, I'm the owner of the lot. I'll give you a little background on it. It was purchased in 1977, at which time I saw Jerry Dagel, who was the Code Enforcement Officer there, and asked him what the zoning was. It was rural farm with a business with one employee. And he said, why? I said, I own a tractor trailer, I want to park it there, build a garage at some point, and be legal with no problems. He said, no problem. I moved into the house in 78, I built the garage in 81 and 82. It is offset from the house. It was never meant to be a car garage, it was a garage meant to be worked on. The truck was parked there until 1991, at which time the truck left. The garage had been used to work on the truck, work on Junior's three-wheeler, my other kid's couple cars, and then, once he started working at Jonesy's, he started using the garage also to work on cars, which I will let him continue.
Can we have pictures of the garage, would you like to see them?
Yeah, I'd like to see them. Want to see them?
Yeah, give them.
Okay. The, the actual, I'm not an artist or photographer, so forgive the, the thing, but the actual, the actual prints are back from the late 80s and mid 90s, and the ones that are on the paper were taken this afternoon.
Okay. Garage has never been had, although two subtract the change in any way.
Thank you.
Once you run away, which up, town 11, three-wheeler.
I'm, I'm thinking the date on the ATV one, we can judge me by the hair. I had a little more hair back then. The only thing that has changed, which I, regarding the letter I received from Ben, was there was a yellow inspection sign above the right side door that is not longer, I took it down once I received the letter, but...
Do you do inspections?
I do state inspections, that is correct.
Are you doing them at this location?
Yes, Kai, that is correct.
Can we let him do it, and then do your present too?
Okay.
You have a habit of peppering people, right?
I have been, I have been working on cars since roughly 1987, 88. I got hired on at Jonesy's in 1988, and if people couldn't afford to have their cars fixed at Jonesy's, the boss did not mind me saying, if you want to go buy used parts and do your thing, just not on property, go ahead, because a person can't afford to get their car fixed. And, believe it or not, living in Cape Elizabeth, there's still a lot of people who, when it comes time for a state inspection, they got their fingers crossed, because they got to pay the mortgage and whatnot. So I've been working in that location since 1987, 88, fixing ATVs before that, and sometimes for compensation, which according to Ben, if I asked the kid to buy me a McDonald's meal, that would constitute compensation. I have even asked to, to say thank you to me, which I believe is asking for compensation. Sometimes depending on the equipment needed and the time allotment, sometimes I did, because as you know, when you go hook your car up to a computer scanner, they sometimes charge you $85 to $90, because a scanner costs $5,000. For as much as I do enjoy my neighbors, I can't afford to do that stuff for free. I try to when I can, sometimes I just can't afford to. So, I have been working, once again, for, what, 20-something years, and Ben knocked on my door, said he introduced who he was, and said, do you work on cars? And I said, occasionally I do. He says, do you ask for compensation? I say, sometimes I do. He said, well, a complaint has been filed against you. I was taken back. I care about my neighbors, and do you guys, are you familiar with the neighborhood out that way? It's not like a Brentwood or Broad Cove, we have space, we don't talk to our neighbors when you get the mail, or even if you did talk in the mailbox, living on a 40 mile an hour road, doesn't feel too residential when a semi truck comes by and almost knocks you off your bike. When all day I hear gunfire, I sometimes think, the town is calling this residential zone, huh? Okay, I guess everyone has to listen to gunfire. But I was taken back, because I, unlike some, I guess the earlier couple, my neighbors would come to me if there was a complaint. It's that kind of neighborhood, old school. I did have several witnesses here, but with the time, they, they had to leave. There was a nice older lady, Ida McLeod, and my next-door neighbor, Robert Butterfield, who lives directly across from the garage, and even said to me, I make more noise in my hobby shop than you have ever heard come from your garage. And I said, I appreciate that. I had no idea they were going to come up here. I had all of my neighbors, when they received that letter, all wanted to come up here. But an attorney advised me, this was not the time for character witnesses, this was just a time to look at a violation and see if something had been broken. So after Ben had told me there was a file, a complaint filed, I said, well, who was it? I'm very concerned. Not because I was doing anything wrong, I am concerned I was upsetting the neighborhood, which they've been good to me, and I like to think I've been good to them. He says, town manager Mike McGovern knows about it. Well, I said, Ben, you mind if we take a ride up and speak to Ms. McGovern? I am concerned. Well, of course, Mike wasn't in his office. Thankfully, as I turned around, he was coming in. And I said, Mike, which I knew from working on his car at Jonesy's, I said, Mike.
But not at your residence.
I'm sorry, what's that?
But not at your residence.
Right, right. But I did ask Mike, Mike, how many times have you drove past my house in the last three or four years? Because when Jonesy's closed, you guys remember when Jonesy's actually used to be a service station and not a $7 pizza? That was roughly the end of '07, beginning of '08. That is when I did get busier at my home location. After seeing people come to my shop, I tried not to do state inspections, because I just didn't want to buy the equipment needed, and I just didn't want the hassle. But after people come into my shop, saying, this place wants to charge me $1,500, a resident of Brentwood came back from Volvo, and he says, Tim, they failed me for this crack. I needed one of those jeweler microscopes to actually see the crack. So I said, this has to stop, people are literally being taken advantage of. So I did go for my inspection license, and the state police by all qualifications, the garage qualified, which I do have to admit, it's not really that hard. If you guys gave me a thousand bucks at your garage, I could make your place a state inspection station. The standards aren't like you have to be a real repair shop. You need a concrete floor and a lift, you got your state inspection license. So once I approached Mike, Mike said, actually, Tim, there was no complaint. I said, there was no complaint? He says, someone was driving by, and they said they noticed a car. I go, was it a neighbor? Well, I don't think I'd call them a neighbor. He goes, Tim, it ju, and I said, no, I'm really concerned. He goes, Tim, it wasn't a complaint, it came up in conversation. So I said, well, if my neighbors don't have a problem, and this person doesn't have a problem, I guess we're good, and I guess Ben now has a problem. So I spoke to my neighbors, and when they all saw that letter, they actually came down and said, why are they doing this to you? I'll be honest with you, new Code Enforcement Officer. I said, and they changed the zoning. They go, changed the zoning? We are rural farm. Ida McLeod thought it was called agriculture. And I said, no, they changed it residential. And they said, when did they do that? And I said, I do not know, and it's very hard to get an answer. I would, I'm still would like to find out, my residents would like to, I might, take that back, my neighbors would like to know. We were never notified of any zoning change. I guess, once again, I did have a couple witnesses who would testify to that, because they all want to know, they all want to know when our zoning was changed, we were not notified. So apparently, on October 15, 2009, I was fine. Then, then it says, I believe in the letter, I'm breaking, what, 19-3-2, which is, what, notifying the town on a change of use. Why would I notify the town of a change of use, if I've been doing it since the mid 80s, and I wasn't doing anything wrong? And now all of a sudden, October 15, 2009 pops up, and I'm supposed to, I guess when I started the business in the mid 80s, I was supposed to run up and tell the town, in case you guys changed the zoning, I'm warning you now, so I do not see a change of use on the property. My neighbors, who would be more than happy, if I'm glad they didn't come up, this means, because that one, phew, that was a bad one, huh? I'm just glad they didn't have to wait this long, and he, they, they wouldn't wait, I'm glad, because every neighbor who's got that letter wanted to come up and speak on my behalf.
So, I'm sorry, sorry to cut you off.
No, and I would just like to know, has this, anyone has, did anyone officially complain about my business being there? Because I keep it very clean, cars are not left out, when you get, and that's why I said on the complaint, I don't really agree with repair shop, because I don't do any real major engine work or transmissions. I was in a motorcycle accident years ago, and so I really don't, people don't pay me top dollar, because you can't pay a mechanic top dollar with one and a half arms. So I try to help people out when I can. So there's not fluids running around, there's no 55-gallon drums or anything lying around. I know Ben did knock on my door, and he did say he didn't look around, but when you walked up, Ben, did you really notice that it really looked like a repair shop, other than the inspection sign, as far as parts lying around, or?
Well, let me see if I can summarize a couple things. So, in, in essence, since 88 or so, you've had a, you know, you've repaired some cars here informally, subsequent to that, when Jonesy's became the pizza place...
The $7 pizza.
Right. You, you went and got your state inspection...
Several, not till I started after Jonesy's closed, I didn't get the license of 2011.
But, but subsequent to that, you kind of got some of the official designations as a state inspection location and what have you, okay. The, you've been doing that since, again, informally since 88 or so, more formally post-Jonesy's close?
Correct, correct.
Somewhere between, you know, the, the zoning clearly changed, well, you're certainly now in an RA zone with a, with a, with a Shoreland overlay district on it. I mean, so that, that is what it is. The only, I guess the only question I have would be, you know, when did the, when, you know, that's a question for us, is when did the, the zoning change in, in that area? And I can't, I don't see anything in here, but is it possible that there's some kind of grandfathering? But I guess, you know, I'm not sure that's the case, so...
Just so we get those dates correct, it was, you've been doing auto repair since the 80s?
I myself have, he repaired trucks.
So on the property at that location, for how long has auto repair been going on for? When did it first start?
Auto repair officially probably back in, I'm going to say, 1986, dabbling, I was just learning about cars.
And has it been continuous since 1986?
Correct, it has been.
And...
Some years, some years more heavy than others, but...
But always, any given year, there was some...
Any given year, that car, if I actually parked, if I actually parked cars in it, like most people drive into the garage, that would be subject to change of use.
And, and when did you get your state inspection designation?
2011, I believe.
And before the auto work? There was a semi there that was having work done on it?
Did that picture get sent? Show her the picture of the semi truck?
I see the pictures, but I'm wondering what the dates were for that work.
I believe that truck was about 78 to 91.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. This is, don't make it sound, you guys want to have a bit more? No, go ahead. Thanks, I appreciate it, do you mind? Thank you so much. I couldn't find a drink to pour. Is there one in the middle? Drink fountain or a cold water? Am I going to get you in? No, I'm good, I'm good, thanks. Nap break holds.
Do we, can we pepper with questions then?
Yeah, I think you were in pepper mode.
So, so the, the issue is that, and I think you don't dispute that, maybe, actually you did dispute it. You're, you're doing repair work on vehicles, but you wouldn't consider it, the technical term as used in the ordinance, you, you wouldn't call, it's, I think it's repair garages, actually.
Yeah, I just don't want it compared to like a place, like where you normally, coming to my shop is not like going to any other shop, you're not on a first-name basis, it's not, you're not going to say, Timmy, I need a $1,500 engine job, that's not going to happen.
And I understand all of your, your comments, that you're considerate of your neighbors, you don't make a lot of noise, your neighbors don't have any issue with it, and you're unaware of any, like, official complaint. The, the one thing that we do need to decide here, and you have a number of arguments that might help you out here, that we have to figure out here, is that irrespective of whether there was ever a formal complaint, you, your uses on the property have to comply with the zoning ordinance.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so, so that's what we got to deal with, so, separate from official complaint, how anything came in, so...
Oh, no, correct, correct. But I'm going on the, like I said, I see that, I just don't want to make, use hasn't changed.
Well, I understand, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It might be, I, in our interest of getting the thing restarted, I forgot, neglected it as Ben, if you could give us some background on this, and, so Ben, if you could just give us the background on this particular case, and I guess just speak to what the zoning was that you just told me about back in 86.
Okay. Mr. Gosh gave a relatively accurate description of how the last few months have played out from, from an administrative perspective, except for the fact about the zoning, that zoning district hasn't changed.
Since when?
I'm, I've got the 86 zoning ordinance in front of me. It's, it's the Residence A District, and it's got the permitted uses in the Residence A District, and none of which resemble auto repair. Home businesses are allowed, and, you know, parking, you know, parking a semi truck on, on the property as, as a home occupation would, would, would probably be allowed, but an auto repair shop in the Residence A District is not permitted, and, and it's also not permitted in the Shoreland overlay district of the Spurwick Marsh.
Didn't we do a car detailing facility in the RA? As a home business?
Yes.
A little while back?
Yes.
Do you remember that one? That might have been before.
I'm going to believe it was Ray Taylor on Harrison Avenue.
Yep, yep.
And one part of the home business was, you cannot let fumes and stuff, have you ever driven past his house? I see a lot of soap bubbles running down the road. I didn't want to get anyone in trouble, I figured he's legal now, I didn't want, I didn't want to go there. No fumes, no smell, nothing in my auto repair shop is, I, I believe it constitutes, if we have to go to home business room, I do not, I do not affect 2% of the traffic. And once again, I, I know it's zoned residential now, which I still kind of don't believe in, because when semi trucks go past your house at 45 miles an hour, I'm sure that doesn't happen in Brentwood or Broad Cove.
I get that on Shore Road.
Yes, yes, and just, just today, actually, I pulled out of my driveway, headed up Sawyer Road, realized I forgot my cellphone, so I turned around the Ron and Gun Club parking lot. When I went to turn into my driveway, there was a semi truck coming down on me so fast, with a heavy, piece of heavy equipment, I was scared to turn into my driveway. And I said, man, if you want to carry all this residential, come, come have your kids play basketball on my street. come, come have your kids play basketball on my street. See how long that stays residential."
So, um...
Is your garage, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is your garage more than 20%? Are your garage working area...
We did the math, but didn't that take effect in August of 2009?
1999?
1999.
Yeah, but we'd still, I don't know whether...
We came, we did the math real quick, and we came. If, do you count the basement and upstairs? Then I think, I believe it does. If you don't count the basement, no. I think we came to that, uh, me and a friend of mine who's an attorney, we did some math.
Um, as a, as a practical matter, what's before us is an appeal of the decision, another decision. Depending upon what we rule on the appeal, um, the applicant has other venues in which he can, um, rectify the problem, right? Namely, a variance. And that's a subsequent application for a subsequent day, depending upon how we rule. So I, I guess I'd, in the interest of the agenda and other things, I'd like to keep it on point relative to the appeal, um, evaluating the appeal on its merits.
And the actual appeal is the categorization of it as a repair garage.
Yeah.
And, which is not actually a term defined in our ordinance.
Incredible.
I raised this issue with the town council and the planning board and the...
But what, but what is clear is that, um, well, it's... Do we have other questions for the applicant before we...
I guess that's where I was kind of going, was that without a definition of what a repair, whatever it is, does it or doesn't it fit into the definition of a home business? I guess that is kind of beside the point if we're just...
It would give him an additional avenue, but it's separate from the issue here.
So you have a lift and everything?
I would call it a semi quarter. I can reach your house. It's not attached to the floor. It costs about $900. It only goes...
You lift the car up?
Yes, but once again, I don't think it, uh, it's not a local dealership that uses a standard.
No, I know it's not. I know you don't have a cold bay.
It's a scissor one, and only, the front tire comes up maybe about this high. That was required for the state police. And you had to have a concrete floor, which I, I do have. That actually just came to law in the state of Maine not too long ago. You used to have a dirt floor, you could do inspections.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any, uh, any public comment? Okay, I guess seeing or hearing none, uh, we will close the, uh, the public portion of the, uh, of this agenda item and move on to board deliberations.
So by virtue of the fact that repair garage is missing from our ordinance, I would say nothing can be considered a repair garage in Cape Elizabeth, period. That's my interpretation. And, um, the residential uses, it's not a permitted use in the, in the district. So it's proper to say it's not a permitted use, but I would say it cannot be categorized as a repair garage.
Say that again?
Repair garage is not actually defined in our ordinance. It's a, it's an oversight in the ordinance that has been there for a number of years. So I would say that nothing can be classified as a repair garage. And by virtue, that's just, so it can't be called that, but it also can't be called any of the other permitted uses. It might be potentially a conditional permitted home business, but that's not the issue in front of us right now. And because no permit has ever been issued giving, permitting it as...
Isn't that a solution?
Hmm?
What you're saying, that's a, that's a possible solution.
I'm saying it potentially could be that, but there's no guarantee it actually meets the criteria for home business. But what can, I can say right now is it's not a permitted use...
Right.
In the, in the district.
So...
But it's also not a new use, which is what the NOV says. I mean, it's clearly a use that's been there for quite some time.
What, and a what?
The notice of violation says that it's a new use, and therefore, no permit was obtained, and so you have to stop doing it right now, or else you're subject to fines and penalties.
So that part would be...
And that part does not seem accurate to me. And 19-3-2, is that non-conforming uses?
No, I think 19, no.
Approvals and permits required.
Right.
For conditional. So I would not uphold the notice of violation, but would note that basically it is, it is a violation, but not for the grounds of the notice of violation. Therefore, overturning the notice of violation.
Could I say something?
Yeah, Ben?
Well, no, just trying to think of how to fit it into the home business.
Yeah, that's a...
But that's not an issue before us.
That's not, that's tonight.
I know you said that before, but, uh, money...
Ben, go ahead.
No, no, no. You've answered it already. I can break it up again, but I won't.
It, it was a use that never received permitting. The, the '86 ordinance required it to be permitted, uh, and the current ordinance requires it to be permitted. You know, my, my use of the word "new," I mean, it, it's a new use in town. Whether we call new 1986 or yesterday, you know, I wasn't privy to the information of when the use started.
I actually did tell you in my department office that...
Okay.
Well, right, and, and I, and I told you it didn't matter because it required a permit, and if you started it in 1986, the zoning ordinance says you needed, you needed a use permit to start a repair garage in 1986. So it was, it was a new use that never received permitting.
I see what you're...
Whether, whether, whether that happened in 1986, 1996, or last month, it was a new use that has always required permitting based on our zoning ordinance.
But 19-3-2 is in 2009. So if we do, we have an '86 one, I would agree with you. I can't agree with you on a new use now.
Well, you may have another venue in which to, to address that.
I do, I do agree with you on that.
Okay.
I stole to, uh, like a friend of mine who said, "Remember, like, I have a board that's just..."
Technically, the record...
We've, we've, we've closed the hearing.
And there's two other issues that want us to get to them.
Oh.
Uh, okay, so I'm, I'm sorry, Chris. So back, you were making a point earlier.
Joanna made the point that, oh, is this, is this a grandfather? She was going down the, uh, the avenue of this is a grandfathered use potentially, but the, the CEO's comment was that even going back to the '80s, basically, this was never a, something that was a permitted use in that district. So from my perspective, it is, it's a non-permitted use, but the actual notice of violation is incorrect in classifying it as a repair garage because of the fact that there's no definition for repair garage. But it is otherwise doesn't...
Although it is a repair garage quotations.
Oh, from that perspective...
I mean, you got to call it something, right? Harvey Shaw.
I mean, it's a repair garage.
It's a garage that the applicant stated he repairs cars in.
That's a repair garage.
True, true, from that perspective, but it isn't a repair garage under the definition of the ordinance by virtue of...
I guess what I'm struggling with in the NOV is the conclusion that it's a repair garage. Repair garages are not an allowed use. Therefore, you have to, what it says is additionally, the zoning ordinance does not allow a use of a repair garage on your property. You might, you're in violation of the ordinance. You are ordered to immediately discontinue operating a repair garage on your property, and failure to do, to stop is, you know, subject to fines and penalties. And I guess what I'm struggling with there is that, yes, repair garage is not listed on the list of permitted uses in the district, even with a conditional use, but home business is. We don't know whether it's in that category or not, and we won't for some time, perhaps. And so there's no definition of repair garage. So how do we then determine whether or not to uphold this notice of violation without a definition saying yes or no on whether this use is or is not allowed? It just seems like a struggle to...
It's clearly not allowed in that it doesn't...
Right, but it's, it's not defined.
Right, but it's not allowed.
But it's clearly not allowed.
Not allowed.
What kind of ZBA?
I mean, really, I mean, it's, it's a non-permitted use in RA, and if you're doing something that's non-permitted...
But how do we call this a repair garage that's not permitted if it's not defined?
That's not the way, the way the ordinance works is we look at the permitted uses, which are single-family dwelling, basically dwelling, 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 then home daycare, farm and fish market, boat repair facility, golf course, wind energy, bed and breakfast. It doesn't meet any of those, therefore, it's not a permitted use.
I hear you on that, but what it's saying is that this is a use that is not allowed, not just that it's not permitted. And so what that means is that it's not allowed under any permitting standard in the RA zone. And I don't know that that's accurate without a definition of repair garage because it seems to me that perhaps it does fit within the definition of home business such that it could be an allowed use, not a permitted use, but an allowed...
I think we're on the exact, we're on the exact same page in that we, I, I would overturn this notice of violation, even though it's not a permitted use by virtue of the language in the notice of violation.
What's the point of a ZBA if it can't overrule some of these things? Aren't we supposed to be like the Supreme Court?
No.
No, 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 I know, okay, but you know, you know what I'm saying? You know, you're in a situation like this, that you want to sort of overrule it, what it says. And I understand what you're saying, it lacks the definition specifically, et cetera, et cetera, but I thought a ZBA has the right to overrule something like that. Maybe we can be challenged on a, is it Superior Court?
But we still have to follow the procedures that are laid out, and we can only address the issue that's in front of us. We can't, like, expand...
Now what's in front of us?
But what's in front of us is just this notice of violation. It isn't a full application to find that this is a permitted, um, home occupation use.
But hasn't it been given sort of like a cease and desist?
Yeah, it's basically, it's like a cease and desist order. And...
What is, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt.
We can overturn the decision, but we don't have any enforcement power. So we can't say, "We overturn this and ask that you come back and do this other different thing." Only the CEO has that authority to enforce.
Okay, but what does he do in the meanwhile? Does he continue with his business while we're trying to go on to the next level? What does the businessman do?
That's a good question.
Well...
By virtue of the other issues in front of us, to the extent that we're ready to vote, we should ironically say that.
It's, in answer to your question, Barry, it is a non-permitted use.
I understand that, it's obvious.
And so, and so, and so, the letter, okay, which is in your package, says that you'll immediately discontinue operating a repair garage on your property.
But how do we waive, how do we waive that? I thought a ZBA had the power to do that.
I don't know, I don't know about the "we" part. I think there are some members on the board who may not agree it should be waived.
Okay, talking about myself, then. You have a guy that's been there since a long, long time. You want him to sort of continue. It's not like some, um, some guy came in there and signed fireworks or something. It's not permitted. You want to help, how do we help this guy? I mean, that's where my attitude comes in.
And there are other, and there are potentially other venues available to the applicant to address that.
Such as?
But it's not, it's not through this specific application that's before us tonight.
But he can continue in business then, in the meanwhile. As a matter of fact, he got that, that letter.
Not necessarily.
What?
Not necessarily.
I know you're not his attorney, but what does he do?
It's not before us.
I know, but we're having a conversation.
No, we're really not having a conversation.
Ideally, I'd like to get the vote done so we can get the last, at least one of the other ones before 10, because otherwise...
Right.
Before 11. Go ahead.
Oh, is it 11?
Well, you said you have to begin by 10.
Yeah.
All right.
But be that as may, I'll, I'll back up. I'm just thinking of a way to help him.
Okay.
Which is understood.
We all, we all, all of us want to do that. It's just...
Don't worry, it'll be okay.
It's just the venue in which it has to be done, so... So I, I guess where, I guess where we left off is, I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, is there's not a disagreement that it's certainly not a permitted use in the RA Shoreland Overland District. It's not. Okay. And where I'm hearing some having a juda is around this being designated as a repair garage, which, okay, is not a defined term, but the broader concern is therefore shouldn't be subject to, uh, discontinuing the use immediately?
My concern is broader than that. It's that the NOV issued based on the repair garage not being on the list of uses that's permissible in the district. But there are other things on that list that may include what he's doing that are permissible in the district. And so I guess what I don't know is whether, when that's the case, the town issues an NOV for something that is permissible, say for example, as a home business, or if the reason why it went to this level, which I haven't seen before, is because it was something that was not on the list at all. And so what I'm struggling with is it being categorized as something that's not on the list at all when that something that's not on the list at all is not defined, if that makes any sense. So how do you say what it is if there's no definition for it? Do you see what I'm saying? I'm sorry, it's a, I'm kind of...
It's not permitted, but we don't want to uphold the finding that it is a repair garage.
Then why don't we just say it's a non-permitted use? Of a, of a, of a business entity?
Which is basically upholding most of the findings of fact, at least as listed here.
Do we issue NOVs to folks that are operating things that may be permissible? Or we, or would we say, "Hey, come in and put in an application"?
Well, it is a violation because there has been no application, so I mean, it would be...
Well, right, but I'm just wondering what we do.
For the sake of time, if, if we, if we don't want to go there, you, you can strike that from the violation letter, not have it as a finding, and just say, "You're, you're in violation because you didn't get a permit for your use. You have to get a permit."
Yes, which we may or may not issue.
And then, and then we take it from there.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
That'll work.
Yep. Okay. So are we ready to vote? Okay. Someone want to make a motion? We can't move on until someone makes a motion.
I am moving that we partially deny and uphold the appeal in that we're striking language from the NOV and revising it to specify that a permit is required for the use.
To the extent it's permitted.
No, I, I know. I'm just, I'm just looking, thinking it through. Not saying, gee, that's a bad motion.
I am striking sentence, I'm proposing that we strike sentence, the last three sentences of paragraph one of the NOV, starting at "this activity constitutes," and running through the end of that paragraph.
You're on the first, end of the first paragraph?
Correct. Starting at "this activity constitutes a new use on the property," deleting that, through additionally, "the zoning ordinance does not allow a use of repair garage on your property."
You're leaving that.
No, I'm deleting that.
So, "this activity" down to the end of the paragraph?
Mm-hmm. And then, in the second paragraph, revising the first sentence to say, "are hereby ordered to immediately discontinue operating a non-permitted use?"
Yeah.
A non-permitted use business entity. So, just going back up to the first paragraph, you stated that you occasionally repair vehicles in the, in the garage and accept compensation for your services.
Period, that's the end of the paragraph.
Yeah, understood. And then, where are you picking up the sentence? And you are, and you have not obtained this approval? Says on a sentence.
Just delete all of that paragraph from there on. Simply, the paragraph ends with, "you stated that you occasionally repair vehicles in the garage and accept compensation for your services," period. End of paragraph, new paragraph, "you're in violation, blah, 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 in order to immediately discontinue operating a non-permitted use business entity on your property."
Okay, so, we're doing a partial...
Upholding the code enforcement officer's notice of violation as revised by the board.
I accept that motion, that amendment to my, that friendly amendment to my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, the vote is to uphold, no, it's to, yeah, essentially to deny the, you're denying the appeal. Okay, but revising the NOV as, as revised by the board. Okay, and do we, okay, and we'll just submit the letter into the record as the revision. Okay. Okay, so, all in favor of denying, denying the appeal? Any opposed? Okay, so the appeal is denied, 5-0. And the revised notice of violation will be entered into the, to the record. So you can resubmit it. Okay. So, let me just do the admin, the finding of facts. Administrative appeal for 1267 Sawyer Road, map R5, lot 55, applicant Timothy Gosh.
Correct.
Finally got it right, okay. Timothy Gosh Jr. is the owner of record of the property at 1267 Sawyer Road, map R5, lot 55. On April 9, 2013, the code enforcement officer sent a notice of violation and order for corrective action to Mr. Gosh regarding the use of his property. On May 6, 2013, Mr. Gosh submitted an administrative appeal application because he does not believe the auto repair is a correct description for the use of his property, and the board has voted to deny the appeal, 5-0, with revision to the notice of violation as approved here tonight by the board. Okay. Thank you. All right. Timothy?
You're welcome.
Moving on to our third agenda item. Now, I guess, I guess before we... Just as, as a point of procedure, is 10 o'clock the last item we can take?
Correct. No, sorry.
All right.
And just for completeness, the two findings of fact that we've made for both this decision and the prior one, we technically didn't take a vote adopting those findings of fact? Do you want, just right now, I don't think they were disputed, but formally, do we, do we see a need to just do a quick 5-0 vote on those issues?
Can we do it after the next one?
Fine with me.
Yeah, just because I want to get, I want to start this before 10, so we're...
Totally agree.
Okay.
This is a, this is a, this is next one?
Yeah. Find my agenda.
What's next? Leveque?
Barry, yeah, Leveque, Barry.
Just as a point of reference, I don't think we're going to get to item four this evening. I'm sorry. I tried.
Is there any word in that thing? I don't see it.
We're not, it's not hap, it's...
Yeah, we're not...
You may leave, it is not going to happen.
It was worth a shot, but... Technically, we have the ability to extend it, but it sounds like the majority of the board is not.
I would say that we'll see you next month, is what I would say. Sorry. We tried, I tried, we tried. Okay. Item three is to hear the request of William Royal, represented, representing Anthony and Donna Leveque of 11 Vernon Road, map U19, lot 7-35, for a variance to construct a garage.
Let me, let me, let me just say for the record, just in case anyone has a problem with it, Bill's daughter was on my outstanding softball team, glad I got that on the record.
Very outstanding softball.
I want them all to make sure that they watch this on videotape, and they'll realize I put that in there. It has no effect in any way, shape, or form on my ability to be impartial. In fact, Bill would probably tell you, "I know nothing at all about this, and he certainly has never talked to me about it." But if anyone on the, on the board has a problem with it, I'm certainly happy to recuse myself.
So she's just a casual social acquaintance?
Yes, just a, yes.
Sorry you have to stay. So, so with that, Mr. Royal, take it away.
Okay, well, I'm here today to ask for a 10-foot variance to the side yard setback, so, to allow Tony and Donna to build a garage on their property, to enclose a wheelchair ramp so that he can get in the house without being subjected to the elements. They've lived on the property since the late 60s, when they first bought the house. They had the option of putting a two-car garage on, which at the time was financially impossible. And since then, the zoning has changed to not allow that, and we'd like to get that fixed.
I think I figured this out if I looked through the package, but the ramp is, you're going to cover the ramp, I know that, but, so the ramp's staying in the same location?
No, the ramp's going to be removed, and it's going to be in the back of the garage.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, the ramp is going to be inside of the garage at the back?
Inside the garage, in the back.
And just as a comment, thank you for submitting the photos of the other properties with garages into the record.
And very well. There's 15 houses in the development, 13 of them have garages.
And for me, that's a key point. So, the surrounding neighborhoods, there's only two of the 15 that are lacking a garage.
Correct.
And as you noted in the photos, most of them are...
Including them, they're one of the 15.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the two that don't.
So, and the photos indicate that the sizes of the garages in the surrounding neighborhood are approximately equivalent to what you're looking to...
Yes.
And how many, do you know how many of those garages are within the, or beyond the setback, if you will?
To be honest with you, I don't, but driving through the neighborhood, they're certainly much closer than 25 feet.
They all came with the house half the time we bought that house. We are still, you know, one or two.
Okay.
Thanks. So that, yeah, that's the one wrinkle of that that's missing, is, are the other ones as close to the setback?
If you look at the, the notice of public hearing, it does show kind of the general, there's no dimensions that are on there, but you can see the location of the houses, you can kind of tell what is the garage and what isn't, and where it is on the lot. It does look like a lot of them have to be pretty close to the lot line.
They are.
If not over it.
Certainly the one next door. Jesus. Surprised that one hasn't come before yet.
Creating more work.
Okay. Do you have a couple more questions on that? Is the garage going to block any, any views, or is it going to cast any shadow on the other?
No, no. And I actually have a letter from the abutting neighbor that it's going to be closest to, if you'd like to hear that.
Do you want to submit that for the record?
Certainly, yeah.
We always like to hear from the, you know, neighbors on things like this, thank you. And where are the Wellmans on, they're at...
They're at number five. They're, they're the next-door neighbor. So, the garage that we'd like to construct will be, the setback will be granted towards their property.
Okay, so the Wellmans, if you're facing the house to the right?
To the right, yes.
Okay.
Do you know roughly how big these lots are, what the road frontage dimension is?
I believe it's 100 feet, 110 feet. It's on... It's a hun, yeah, it's 100 across the front, 110 to the back.
Have any of your other neighbors opposed it, or said anything one way or the other?
No, I was told, you know, let them know that we were thinking about doing this, and nobody had any opposition. I want to throw one thing in, can I hand on the...
Can you come into the microphone just so we can hear you?
You said that you'd like to hear from the neighbors?
Well, either in writing or verbally.
Would you like to hear from the person that lives in the situation?
Sure.
Okay, that's me.
You're the applicant.
I am the one. This past winter, when we had that terrible storm in, was it March? We, I thought it was March, but maybe it was February. I felt that myself and my husband were both in an unsafe situation because we physically could not open the doors to our house. The snow was up against the back door, which is fine, you can't get down there anyway because there's two steps. But the ramp door, the door in the front that goes out to the ramp, it was up to the doorknob, so I could open the door about this way much and say, "I can't get out of the house." And I couldn't get him out, and I just felt we were both in an unsafe situation because the ramp is on the outside of the house. That's why I'm saying, "Please, let us get it inside of a garage." Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, I didn't receive any comments regarding the application after the public notice was sent.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
And would this, would the notice have gone to all the houses that are shown on this map?
Yes.
I noticed there's a shed there now, the shed is going away. It just says on the drawing, "to be moved," so I didn't know if you were moving it some...
It's actually going to be pushed back.
Okay, so it's staying, it's just going behind the garage?
There's no foundation, it's on blocks.
And what would be the height of the garage?
I don't have the elevation drawing with me, but... 17 feet, maybe?
Have the, have the plans been submitted to...
I haven't gone for the application for permit yet, so...
But it's going to be roughly a single-story...
It's a single-story garage, no one's going to live in it.
Have you decided what the roof pitch is going to be?
A five, to match the house.
Okay, that's a very shallow pitch, single story.
So it'll basically just go over from that?
It'll basically look like the other garages in the pictures.
It's 13 feet.
Yeah.
I think we'll just add that either the plans are submitted for approval, or the height restriction is part of the, the conclusions or finding of facts.
The most sketch of the design, what it will look like at the end?
Yes, I have one right here.
Is it in our package here?
It's not in your package, I'm sorry. It wasn't ready at the time that I submitted the package.
Let me take a look at it.
Sure.
Imagine what it's going to look like. Not that we're a architecture review board, but, thank you. Go ahead. What is this? What are these?
That's the part, the house shingles.
That's the, oh, yeah, going into the house?
No, this, this would be the new garage area.
Right.
And then, part of this is to construct the ramp across the back, which meant I had to extend the roof of the house back to encompass the ramp. So that's what you see here.
If I'm looking at the house, what do I see?
The existing structure is...
And this is the addition, of course.
And this is the addition.
Only single car?
It's a two-car garage, but it's, it's a single door.
That's wide enough. It has to be, right? It's an amendments anyways, huh?
That's the floor plan, so this is all existing.
But I'm interested in the exterior, what it will look like.
It's all going to be, see, when he drew this, he shaded the existing house.
Are you an architect?
Am I?
No, no, who drew this? An architect?
Peter Polanski.
And what is he?
He's a draftsman. His father actually built the house.
He's a local designer. Not an architect, but he's a local designer.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much. I don't see, I don't see anybody else sitting here to, for public comment, so, hearing or seeing no public comment, we'll close the public comment portion of the, the hearing, and move on to the board deliberations.
I would just make the observation that, in addition to just the regular criteria that need to be evaluated for variance, there is the additional lesser finding that is needed in the instances where the building is being made accessible to a person with a disability, which would also potentially apply here. And to the extent that the, there is currently access by way of a ramp, but it's an outside ramp, that causes problems in the winter time, I do understand. I would say that making a covered interior area, which I would say this is pretty close to meeting with an interior ramp, would fall under that criteria as well.
And where is that, Chris, that you're looking?
1952 Powers and Duties subsection B variances, the very last paragraph under section one of districts, except the Shoreland Performance Overlay District, notes that the zoning...
Overlay District, notes that the ZBA may grant a variance for the purpose of making a property accessible to an applicant with a disability who is living on the property without a finding that a strict application of the ordinance to the applicant and the applicant's property would cause practical difficulty.
I should have asked you for the page number.
Oh, 51 in my version.
Thank you. God, that was much simpler.
I think we should nevertheless step through the practical difficulty criteria, but keeping in mind that there's the additional basis for granting the...
But it's an additional, so...
The request.
Yeah. Understood. Okay. Yeah, I think the, I mean, it's clear that from a characteristic perspective, I think that, you know, them being one of only two other homes that doesn't have a garage is pretty much indicative of the character. I would have liked to have seen something a little more definitive than us eyeballing in the notice of public hearing and saying, "Yeah, it looks like it's pretty close to the setback line here, on the sides." But, but absent that, I think that, you know, and actually just looking at some of these pictures, they appear, some of these appear to be pretty close to the, to the side setbacks as it is anyway. You know, we have at least, you know, an abutting neighbor supporting the garage, and according to Ben, and not seeing anyone here, no one opposed to it. So, again, just, I guess from my perspective, I'm supportive of the, of the variance. I'd like to, of course, your, all of your thoughts and comments, so...
I support granting it. Also noting the fact that we don't have explicitly what the setbacks are on the adjacent properties, but the pictures, when factoring in the fact that there's potentially the additional criteria for granting the variance in order to provide covered access, I think we could say it's safely met here.
I agree, looking at the, the four criteria that, sorry, five criteria that each of them are met, you know, that there certainly will not appear to be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. It will actually make it much more consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. Practical difficulty is not the result of action taken, and there is not, you can't make the non-conforming lot size any bigger, so...
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this? Okay. As usual, someone other than you will have to make a motion.
I move we approve the variance request for MAP U-19, Lot 7-35, at 11 Vernon Road, for applicants William Royal on behalf of Anthony and Donna Leveque.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's five-zero. Okay, so why don't we go through the additional finding of facts? And we'll actually vote on this time. Vote on...
Just read them all and then we'll just...
Yeah, yeah, right. Variance request for, finding of fact, variance request for MAP U-19, Lot 7-35, 11 Vernon Road, applicant William Royal on behalf of Anthony and Donna Leveque. Anthony and Donna Leveque are owners of MAP, of record of MAP U-19, Lot 7-35, 11 Vernon Road. 11 Vernon Road is a non-conforming lot in the RA District. The required setback are 25 feet on the front, 25 feet on the side, and 20 feet on the rear. In order to construct an attached two-car garage, the applicant is requesting a variance that allows a side setback of 15 feet on the easterly side of the property. There is no substantial departure from the intent of the ordinance, and a literal enforcement of the ordinance shall cause a practical difficulty as defined by MRSA Section 43534-C.
And the only additional part would be, we're not just outright granting a side setback of 15 feet, it's a side setback of 15 feet to build the proposed structure. You know what I mean? So they can't build a mansion of whatever size.
Right, but doesn't in order to construct a two-car...
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, just, just checking. I, we also talked, though, about as, of adding a height restriction. And I don't know what the, so I guess the height, the height restriction would be...
An attached one-story two-car garage? So just to revise the existing three to say, in order to construct an attached one-story two-car garage?
Yep, we can do that. Yep. Okay. So number three of the finding of facts would be, in order to construct an attached one-story two-car garage, the applicant is requesting a variance that allows a side setback of 15 feet on the easterly side of the property. Okay. All in favor of those additional finding of facts? Any opposed? Okay, so that's five yes, zero no. Okay. That takes care of this application. Thank you. Congratulations. Why don't we go back to the addition?
And there will be no passing over the garage, and there will fix the truck.
Thank you. Why don't we go back to the, just vote on the...
I think we just say, for the first one, we previously covered the finding of facts, all in favor, as read.
Of the, on the appeal?
For both of the first two issues. So the hotly contested issue, there were findings of fact, we voted on a conclusion, then there were findings of fact, we technically didn't take a vote on the findings of fact.
Right. I agree. So, do we want to reread these and just vote on them? Or you just want to say that we're, we're voting five-zero for the additional finding of facts of the administrative appeal for Timothy Gosh?
Why don't we just say, like, to clarify the record, we're, we're now voting in favor of our findings of fact, consistent with the decisions that we did earlier tonight? Does that work?
Yeah, that works. Okay. So, we're just taking, we're just doing an additional finding of facts, or just affirming the finding of facts for the administrative appeal of Ford, that we voted on previously for 1267, for Timothy Gosh, Jr. at 1267 Sawyer Road, MAP R5, Lot 55. And I, are we actually, we're going to vote on those? So, so all in favor of the finding of facts? Any opposed? So that's five-zero.
The same with the Delano Park one.
And Delano Park...
Dallas, Levy.
Oh, you're sure I saw, I must have seen an additional finding effect in there somewhere.
Camera's still on?
Yep. Yeah. And so, and so again, we're affirming the previously reviewed additional finding of facts in the administrative appeal for MAP U-7, Lot 46A, 502 Delano Park, the application of Heather Dallas. All voting in favor of the finding of facts? Any opposed? That's five-zero. Yes, zero no. And with that, there not being any other business, the application for Kelly's that was forth on the agenda will be heard next month. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Do we have anything else for July yet, or...
I...
You better say no.